Aloha, akako. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. Thank you so much for joining us here at the Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board. Today is Monday, May 12, 2025. We will call this meeting into order at 7:00 PM. We want to invite those that are joining us or potentially to join us to welcome yourselves here in person at the Waimea Nalo Public Library. We are in the meeting room at 41-1320 Kalaniana Ole Highway here in Waimea Nalo 96795. If you folks are joining us on WebEx, we do have a WebEx link and availability for you folks to go ahead and participate virtually with us. So whichever floats in the direction of your needs, please go ahead and take that opportunity to do so. The purpose of the Neighborhood Boards and the Neighborhood Board Plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Rules for engaging anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes. Please ensure you have microphone. Your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can mute and unmute for those dialing in on the phone by pressing star six. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comment or questions. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. We remind folks that participation in our meeting, we do have an expectation of aloha. Akahi meaning kindness to be expressed with tenderness, loka hi meaning unity to be expressed with harmony. Oluolu meaning agreeable to be expressed with pleasantness. Ha'aha meaning humility to be expressed with modesty. Mahonui meaning patience to be expressed with perseverance in accordance with Hawaii revised statutes, chapter 5-7.5. No... ...the agenda required by the State Sunshine Law Act 92. Specific issues not noted on the agenda cannot be voted on unless agenda item is added to the agenda, which requires a two-thirds vote, that is nine members of this 13-member board, which will be needed to add an item to the agenda. Doing so, however, is not permitted if, one, the item to be added is of reasonably important, major importance, and/or, two, the action of the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether or not an item may be added to the agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. We ask those that are participating to please silence all electronic devices, and we note that this meeting is being recorded to be played later on Olalo channels. Please note for members that are joining us online during voting and discussion, you'll be asked to turn your cameras to the on position. So mahalo and welcome, everybody. I'm going to ask for a volunteer to open us up in Pule. We can do so if there are any volunteers to do so this morning, this afternoon. I don't see anyone online. Kanela, you mind? Please, mahalo.
Aloha, my name is Kanela, Sub District 5, Board Member, Puliakako. Dear Hemi, Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all of the EKA and conversations that we're about to have. We ask that you continue to watch over us, guide us, and protect us through all of our conversations, our decisions, and also our thanking for the God. We ask that we keep those that need prayer of healing and safety to go their way for a safe and speedy recovery. We please continue to ask all those that leave that they have a safe journey home and that they're always protected in your grace, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Mahalo. Thank you so much, Kanela. With that being said, gang, we're going to move on to roll call. We're going to call Rachel to provide roll call for us, or Brandon. Brandon's going to do our roll call for us. Members, when your name is called, please acknowledge. Mahalo.
Okay, starting the roll call. Board member, Kenani Granberg.
Here.
Oh, here, okay. Chair, Kimiona Kane.
Here.
Here. Board member Jenna McKee. Okay, absent. Board member Lourdes Milan. Okay, absent. Board member Moeata Moku Lehua.
El.
Here.
Okay, here. Okay, here. Board member Kapio Lani Ni.
El.
Yep, here. Board member Ted Ralston. Absent. Board member Brenda Wong.
Here.
Here. Board member Kanela Kamahaloha Nui Lani.
Nui Lai.
Here.
Here, okay. And Board member Kuike Kamaki'a Ohelo. Okay, absent. Two, three, four, six. Okay, I think we have quorum.
Seven, seven.
Seven, oh, seven.
Mahalo, thank you so much. That brings us to six members present, so we do not have quorum. Seven is quorum for us. We'll check in in a little bit to see if folks do arrive, so thank you. We want to introduce Brandon to the community, to the board. Brandon's going to be joining our board as our NCO Assistant. We'll give him some time a little bit later to share a little bit about his journey, but welcome. Thank you for joining us. Mahalo. At this time, we're going to turn it over for a message from our kupuna. Do we have any kupuna this evening that would like to share anything with the board? Or the community? We give this time every month to ensure that if our kupuna feel inclined to guide, that they have the opportunity to do so and/or share a story or a memory that they want to capture. Anybody? Okay, hearing none. We will continue to keep that open. In light of that, we tend to, actually, our process is to read from sites of Oahu in the event that we do not have kupuna present to share with us. So we're going to be reading this evening regarding burials at Bellows Field. This is taken from sites of Oahu, Sterling and Summers, and is on page 244. And it talks about site number 20, which is a reference to a map here in the book. Dated June 20, 1952, skeleton number one, adult male, large, complete flexed, face down, axis of body west, southwest, forward head, exposed by bulldozer. Skeleton number two, 15 yards from road, west of south, west of road, south 40 yards from number one, pelvis up, head down, angle 45, flexed. And this is taken from a notebook, Oahu Archaeology, and then there is some site references there. So we are still learning from our kupuna even as they may not be present here with us in the direction, but they are present here with us in some other ways. And so mahalo to our kupuna for setting the pace and holding us accountable to said pace. We're going to move on, gang, to Olalono'ea of the Month. We have number 10. "Hiki palale, hinou lue o wala wala kipoja." This is what the Hawaiians thought the first white men to visit the island said. It is "untranslatable gibberish, repeated with laughter when one is told something utterly incomprehensible." That is definitely a tongue twister in the wrong way, so. But these moments of connectivity is things that allow us the opportunity to learn. "Ahiki palale, hinou lue o wala wala kipoja." Again, a reference to what Hawaiians thought first white men to visit the island said. "Untranslatable gibberish, repeated with laughter when one is told something utterly incomprehensible." At this time, we're going to move on to emergency providers. We have the Honolulu Fire Department here with us in the library. So we are mahalo them for your time. Gentlemen, the time is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Captain David Schuber from the Waimea Nalo Fire Station. The incident statistics for April were 39 medical calls, two motor vehicle accidents, one mountain rescue, and one nuisance fire. The fire safety tip for the month is talks about home fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers serve as the first line of defense against fires and often extinguish the fire before the fire department arrives. For more information, visit homefiresprinkler.org. That's one word, homefiresprinkler.org. Fire spreads quickly. A fire can turn deadly in under two minutes. Synthetic materials burn quickly and release deadly poisonous smoke. High-risk individuals in homes and home fires include small children, elderly adults, those with disabilities, and pets. Fire sprinklers protect your home and family and activate automatically to control the fire, thereby giving everyone a chance to escape. The best protection is having working smoke alarms, fire sprinklers, and a practice fire escape plan. Information about Honolulu's ordinance relating to fire safety is available at fire.honolulu.gov.
Thank you so much for your report, sir. Members, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Seeing no hands. Any members from the public online, and then we'll take those in person. Auntie Barb, you have a question for Fire Department?
Not at this time, sorry.
Okay. Is your hand up for a comment or question?
I guess it was for earlier, when you were talking about kupuna, if they had anything to say.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't realize your hand. Hold that thought. We'll finish with the Fire Department, and we'd love to give you the floor.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, seeing no hands in online. Do we have anyone in person? Hi, Lily. Okay, seeing none. Gentlemen, thank you so much for your service. Mahalo, be safe.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our Honolulu Police Department. Do we have any HPD here present for tonight's meeting? Okay, seeing none. We're going to acknowledge Kuike Kamaki'a Ohelo, 7:08 PM. That brings us to seven members in quorum. Thank you so much for being here, Kuike. And then we're going to turn it back over to Auntie Barb. Auntie Barb, please introduce yourself and we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Okay, yes, my name is Barbara Mayer. I go by Barb. And I've been a resident in the Waimea Nalo town since 1976. My dad was military, so we moved all over the place. I've lived here longer than anywhere else, so it certainly does feel home to me, for sure. What I wanted to bring up tonight real briefly actually concerns my particular part of the neighborhood, which is the Beach Lots area. As you may all well know, there is a street called Laumilo that runs right close to the beach, and it's a very straight road. All of our streets here in this particular neighborhood have a speed limit of 15 miles per hour. But, you know, when you've got a long straight road, I'm afraid not everybody abides by that rule. I myself might have let the speedometer creep up a little bit because it's straight and you just get going. So I've thought, that's a problem, because there are a lot of folks who go for walks any time of the day, especially morning, and at the end of the workday, go for walks with or without their dog, with or without their stroller. People bike around, people stop and talk to their neighbors, and if cars are going to go zooming around, it is dangerous. So I'd like to propose the idea that we consider, however you go about doing this sort of thing, that we consider having two or three speed bumps put into the Laumilo stretch where people would have to slow down. So that's just what I wanted to add to the meeting tonight, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Auntie Barb, thank you so much for sharing your voice with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for letting me.
Members, we're going to move on to filling of board vacancies. We have three vacancies available this evening. Sub District 9, Old Homestead and Beach Homes to Makapuu. Are there any recommendations or nominations? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to Sub District 10, Aglots. Are there any nominations for Aglot, Sub District 10? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to Halea Opuni, Sub District 11. Any nominations or recommendations for Sub District 11 Halea Opuni? Seeing and hearing none. We offer this, of course, to our community. If you folks live in these areas and sub districts, please do let us know if you have an interest in joining the board. That would bring our total up to 13 members present, which is a complete board. And your help and your service would be absolutely appreciated. If there are interests, please go ahead and forward them to any one of the board members, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. But we'll go ahead and defer these items to the next meeting in June and see if we can fill them at that point. Mahalo. We also have a filling of committee vacancies. We haven't had committees in a minute, and I know we're going to kind of take a pause on that, so I'm going to go ahead and just defer this until we reset in July, unless there's any objection. Okay, mahalo. Hearing none. We're going to move on to public agency reports, starting off with border water supply. Dani, thank you for being here. We look forward to your report.
Hi, good evening. My name is Danielle Nellis with the Board of Water Supply. So I don't have any main breakthrough report for the month of April. I think there was one, but I don't see it on our roster. Anyway, the monthly report for the border water supply, summer water conservation tips. So border water again is urging people to save water during the summer, and here are some quick easy tips, water-saving tips for you. Water your plants early in the morning to reduce evaporation. Take quicker showers. Check the toilet for leaks. It's usually the flapper valve, which is a quick change. And don't let the faucet run and run, especially when brushing our teeth. And border water still has rebates on water-efficient appliances and miscellaneous items. And this will also help lower your water bill. And then any other tips we have on our borderwatersupply.com website. That's it. That's all I have. Any questions?
Dani, thank you so much for your update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't recall which main break there was either, but if we do recall, we'll go ahead and make sure that we communicate with you folks. Members online, any questions for border water supply? Seeing no hands. Any members, any community members online? Question for border water supply? Seeing none. Anyone here in present? Seeing none. Dani, I just have one quick ask, if you might be able to do so. We know that there is a large project coming down the pipeline, right, to fix some of the mains coming down into Waimea Nalo. Can we just keep ahead of that and just maybe every month update, even if it's the same information, just so that the public knows?
Okay, for sure. Got it.
Appreciate it. Dani, thank you so much for being here, ma'am.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, gang, we're going to move on. Rick Blangiardi, Mayor Rick Blangiardi is representative, director Laura Thielin. Director, the time is yours. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you extra loud and extra clear here in night. Yeah, we're good.
So for some reason, I can't get the video started. I'm sorry. My computer is not working, but...
No problem. Thank you.
It's probably better not to be able to see me anyway. So the mayor's highlights for this month. The city and state leaders are trying to recruit more what they call guardian ad litem to assist with the community treatment programs. A number of Oahu houseless do not have the mental capacity to represent themselves in a family court or court proceeding, and with guardian ad litem to help them through the process, we could be able to get treatment and possibly housing for more people who are living on the streets. So these are paid positions, and if people are interested, we can direct people to the right area to sign up to become a guardian ad litem, and they can get trained. The city has recently signed into law bills that are limiting the number of street festivals in Waikiki to help out with the residents there a little bit, and then also to support outdoor dining in a number of locations. People found that that was really popular during COVID, and a lot of people want to continue it, and a lot of our zoning laws are pretty outdated. And so they changed those rules to allow more outdoor dining. Ho'omalohia Botanical Garden has reopened the recreational fishing program. It's a catch-and-release program at the reservoir there, and they have online reservations. They have reserved slots for walk-ins for people who are interested in doing walk-ins. And also groups can go in on days that are not open to the general public. And so if there's a scout troop or something like that, a school that wants to go for an outing, they can do that as well. The Botanical Gardens does have a number of bamboo poles. People don't have fishing poles, so they can sign up for that and be able to access poles when they're at the location. As you folks know, the Neighborhood Board elections are coming up soon, and so people can vote online for those elections, and we're encouraging everybody to participate in that. And then we're getting ready for registration for summer fun, as well as summer classes at a number of city parks and gardens. And we are still hiring for summer fun programs. So if you know people who are teenagers, we can hire as young as 16 for lifeguards. I think the pay is down $19 an hour, and 17-year-olds for summer fun program aides. And then if you know keiki that would like to sign up for summer fun, or maybe middle school kids that are like, it's a little too young for me, we have a junior leader program where they can learn some leadership skills and go through that. So you can sign up through online, the bit.ly/summerfun. The jobs can be applied for online too, through that same summer fun website. And then people can also sign up for summer classes as well through the DPR website. DFM was not able to do the follow-up answers to the board. They're still researching some of that information, so I will be coming back next month with some information from DFM regarding the stream and floodway maintenance questions that came up at a prior board meeting. And with the chair's permission, I can do a brief overview of the public meeting regarding the improvements at Waimea Nalo Beach Park and the status of the design for that. I do not have pictures to share at this point, but my hope is that the next board meeting or the following one, we will have some design pictures to be able to share with the community. But Chair, would it be all right for me to update the board on the beach park improvements?
Director, thank you. We'd absolutely love to be aware, get aware of those things. So yes, please.
Okay, so we did hold a community meeting at the Waimea Nalo School and Public Library. The Neighborhood Board Chair and Vice Chair joined us, as well as some other members, and we had a good turnout. The Department of Design and Construction, as well as the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the consultant who's doing the design for the project were there. We shared some pictures of options for the design for the two comfort stations, the one by the campsite and then the one by the main park area. One of the things that was discovered is the regulations for bathrooms in this area have become more strict since these comfort stations were originally built many years ago. So the number of toilet stalls at the comfort station by the main park, I think, is at 10, but the maximum number of toilet stalls a new comfort station can hold there is eight. The number of toilet stalls at the campsite is only four, and that can hold more toilets at that campsite area. So at the public meeting, the community liked one of the two designs at the comfort station towards the main area. What we're going to do is propose to put that at seven toilets rather than eight and reserve the eighth toilet for the Arts and Crafts Building. That building is closed now, as you know, due to arson. DDC will be starting design to repair the structural damage to the building, and we would like to add a toilet in that building because if we open it for summer fun activities, where we can bring the keiki there from the two different summer fun programs or kapuna activities, we don't want to, you know, keiki, we can't send them over to the main restroom on their own, so we kind of need a restroom there. And then for kapuna, just for the convenience to have a place close by, as opposed to having to hoof it over to the public restroom would be nicer. So we're moving forward with the preferred design with those changes. Reduce the number of toilet stalls to reserve one for the Arts and Crafts Building, for that comfort station at the main part of the park. And as the design consultant gets better pictures together, drawings, we'll be bringing those to the board. The comfort station by the campsite, there was a lot of comments on that. We had too many doorways opening up directly on the walkway. People thought that that would get too congested and crowded. So there was recommendation to kind of pivot that. We are trying to stay for both comfort stations in the same footprint, so we do not dig up any area that was not previously disturbed. So we went back and took a look at that, and we've asked the design consultant. The design that was shared at the public meeting was smaller than the existing footprint. So we asked them, can you please go back and try to fit in more toilets? Have the doors open up at a variety of areas so it doesn't all get congested in one area. Add a bottle filling station to both comfort stations. The standalone drinking fountains get vandalized a lot and broken a lot. So we wanted to try a bottle filling station that's in the wall of the building on the exterior so people can have access to drinking water there, and hopefully that would be more consistent. And then some minor changes that people had suggested, like in the changing room areas to have benches in all of them and not just in the ADA accessible one, as well as hooks, because that's more convenient for people using the changing areas. And then, as I mentioned, DDC will be working on the design for the Arts and Crafts Building. It's mainly to restore the structural integrity of that building. We do not anticipate changing the building much, other than the bathroom stall. And as we get designs and pictures, we will be bringing them to the board. I'll work with the chairs to make sure we have time on the agenda to share them. And then that would be the way that we could get community comment at kind of the 30% design stage, the 60% design stage, and then 90% design stage, so it avoids surprises, you know, when we get to the final design. And then we'd be happy to take any questions.
Director, thank you so very much for the update on that. Certainly, we could get into a lot of discussion about it this evening, so I just want to, you know, kind of pause and let our board and our community know that we will have continual discussions about this. So if there are immediate questions or concerns, it'd be better to just convey them maybe through writing, and then we can have updates about it. In addition, Director, if I may, there was a recent mayor's town hall meeting. Was there anything information-wise that you think might be relevant for the community to hear who may not have been able to participate?
You know, I apologize. I normally do the winward town halls, but I had procedure done. And so the deputy director did that town hall, and I did not have a chance to debrief with him. I will check in with him. If there's anything critical, I can forward that to you folks, otherwise I can add that into the report next month.
Awesome. We really appreciate that. I know some might have attended, but I know the others did not. So mahalo, that would be great. So we'll go online. Members online, do you have any questions for the office of the mayor? Seeing none. Do we have any community members online? Questions for the office of the mayor? Seeing none. Anyone here in public? I mean, in person? Kanela, please, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kanela, Sub District 5. I guess my question would be if the mayor is able to share with our community about the Waimea Nalo beautification that just happened? And to probably just, like, give us a report on the who, what, when, where, and why, and how that came about. I did get the honor of sitting with our Park and Recs Committee, and that was a topic that came up that we don't really understand what happened and how that happened.
Thank you for the question. Could I get a little more information by what you're referring to with the Waimea Nalo beautification? Because I'm not familiar with it, by that name at least.
How much time do I have? No. Okay.
Director, I'll get you some of the information, and then you can follow up on your end, and we might have an opportunity to have a larger discussion there. This was in regards to the sweep that took place at the beach park and then some planting that was done, that beautification process.
Actually, I do have a little information about that. I did receive a call as the director of the Parks Department. Even though that area is outside of the park, it's in the state DOT right-of-way, I received a call from a couple Waimea Nalo residents who were asking to do the beautification. The park involvement was, they got permission from the State Department of Transportation to do the beautification project there because that's part of the DOT right-of-way. Once the State Department of Transportation approved that, we agreed to allow at the Park Department the use of the irrigation temporarily for the trees to be established there. Our department always, it also has a Division of Urban Forestry, and the city is trying to increase the tree canopy on the island by a significant amount. So we tend to support plantings of trees on park property as well as in other areas. So it was kind of a joint effort at the request of some of the community residents, you know, to enable them to do the work. The work was all done by volunteers, is my understanding. Yeah.
Thank you.
Including the plants were donated.
Mahalo. Those details are great. We certainly will follow up on that. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Director, I just have one quick, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, no, please, go ahead.
I just have one quick question. I know we're celebrating the reopening of Ho'oumaluhea's fishing. I'm just curious, has there ever been like an inventory of whether or not there's native species in there?
You know, we partner with the Division of Aquatic Resources and they do some fishing education programs there. So I can ask them whether there's been any inventory. When we went for the opening, they were talking about two species of fish in there, but that reservoir was an Army Corps of Engineer project after some, I think, 1950s flooding in Kani Ohe that was really severe. So that's a built reservoir. I don't know, though, I mean, obviously, it's capturing water from streams, but I don't know if it's so high up, if there were native species that came down into it or not. So I could, I could ask Aquatic Resources.
Mahalo. I would absolutely love if that could happen. And the thought process there is our waterways are connected. And whether we say that it was done in the 50s, the 60s, the 40s, it really doesn't matter. The water does get connected somewhere. I recall sitting in a Board of Agriculture meeting where they were talking about bringing in some additional fishing species. I don't know if it was trout or bass, I'm not too sure, but it was from the East Coast. And they wanted to rediversify the genetics of the fishing out in the Waihewa Reservoir. And I thought it was ludicrous to think that we would be bringing in species that are not our own for this particular function. And yet, the care of our native species, our O'opu, for example, are just left threatened. And I'm just really an advocate for that. And even in these spaces where we are collecting water, which is great, the water has to disperse somewhere. And so there's connectivity. I would just be curious about it and urge that the county take a larger look at what those impacts are for the body of water because the release of bass, smallmouth bass into our water systems are, they are problematic. They are eating our native species. And just making, making sure that the county takes a greater stance on protecting and preserving the very intricacies and the beauty that Hawaii offers would be a great thing.
Thank you. That's a good point. I know that Ho'oumaluhea, we're working with the Oahu Invasive Species Council to set up an area for them to have an office there. And they already partner with Ho'oumaluhea staff on invasive species education. So I will ask the director, you know, to talk with them and then to take a look at that reservoir, if there's any opportunities there or cautions that we need to take.
I would appreciate it. I really appreciate your time. Thank you, Director, for your time this evening. Mahalo.
Chair, if I may ask one other question, though. I know I don't want to take up too much of the board time in the future when we do have the drawings and things for the beach park, but the community had asked for, you know, kind of ongoing engagement, which we were planning on doing through the board. We could, I know people don't like to do their comments all the time via a website, but what we could do is each time when we update, we can remind people that they can do comments on the website as well and maybe do kind of a hybrid so that you can be more efficient with your board meetings, if that's all right.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think as long as we can know ahead of time that you're planning to present on it, we can rearrange the agenda accordingly. There will have to be a cutoff time, I'm sure, but I don't have a problem putting, you know, some more minutes to it. And then if there is opportunities to think about and go through the hybrid perspective, I think that would be helpful to it, to help us get organized and thought maybe perhaps. So that's, I think we can try both, Director, and then we can see how it works out.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Director, thank you again for your time and service. Mahalo for being here. All right, gang, we're going to be moving on to community organizations. Do we have anyone from Waimeaalo Elementary and Intermediate School this evening? Hearing none. Hey, bro. I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, we are celebrating 100 years of Waimeaalo Elementary and Intermediate School, and that will be happening this coming week. Yeah, this coming weekend is the celebration. If folks are interested in participating, please, please, please come down and join. This will be Wednesday, May 7th, excuse me, Saturday, May 17th. This will be from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM here at the Waimeaalo Elementary and Intermediate School. It is a free concert, free, featuring Paula Funga and friends, free admission, parking, live performances by alumni, family-friendly keiki zone food vendors, craft vendors, and so much more. Come down and celebrate 100 years of service and schooling here in Waimeaalo at this campus. So we congratulate Waimeaalo Elementary and Intermediate School on this achievement. We look forward to supporting and serving in that way, and we invite all to come and participate. Mahalo. We're going to move on Blanch Pope Elementary. Hearing none, Malamahonua Public Charter School.
Aloha, Kumi, Chair Kani. I'll be, this is board member, Kapio Lanini. I'll be presenting on behalf of Kumua Espana.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Kapi. Do you need me to pull up the slides? Are you going to pull up the slides?
Oh, did she share with you?
She shared something. I didn't read it yet.
Okay. Or I can, I can share.
So go.
I can share.
Okay, thank you.
Oopsie. Hold on. Okay, can you see?
Perfect. There you go. Yep, go ahead, Kapi. Thank you.
Okay, so. See what she have here. So it started off with our Olela Noial, Elahoi Maekava. And then here we have our Papa Kalai class. So this is after our seventh graders who, this year, they did Kui for our sixth grade sale. So here we have our sixth graders who just last week completed their four-day, three-night sale. They just stayed in Kani Ohe Bay. It was a big celebration for them, also a big accomplishment. So this year was, I think, one of the largest classes we had. I think we had a total of 19 students complete their sale. And also another celebration for Malamahonua. This year, we won a high honor for $20,000 for the Building Hope Impact Award, being recognized in the category of innovation and education. So this just happened also last week. Denise flew over to Florida. She made that long trek to receive this award for us. Let's see. Just some important dates. May 12th through the 23rd, we have our K through 4 trimester three interviews happening on campus and around campus. May 29th is our Ho'ike and Pukakula at Windward Community College. And then June 13th at Bishop Museum, our Malkutumakai, continued celebration of the Waimeaalo Ma'au Amau. So I think that was it that I had.
Kapi, thank you so much for the update. Any members online questions or comments from Malamahonua? All right, any community members online? None. Board members here? And anyone from the public? None. We congratulate your kula, mahalo nui, for setting an example of what we might be able to look forward to in education. I know it's been a long work and a hard work, so we mahalo the commitment to that. So thank you, Kapi, and congratulations to you folks.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, nui. We're going to move on to Hui Malama Okekai. Myle, are you here tonight for that? So are we still not getting your your audio? Okay, we could try again, Myle. We go, see if you can adjust your, your side and fix audio and then we can definitely hear from you. We'll come back to you. Windward Community College, Artist Chancellor, welcome.
Aloha, Mai, Chairman Kani. I've got two events and I also have two enrollment things. So the first event is this Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. We'll have our Hanau Nama'le concert with Kapena, and it should be really exciting. This helps to raise funds for scholarships for our Hawaiian music certificate program, which currently is primarily targeted for Department of Education teachers so that they can offer music in the classrooms again. And then on Friday, it's our graduation. We're really excited to have all of our students walk across the stage. We thank everyone in the community for the support of their relatives and friends that, as they got their education. It's a big deal. Yeah, so that'll be 5:00 PM on Friday, Chair Kani. Thank you so much. I know that you're attending to represent the Neighborhood Board, so mahalo. And then two things with enrollment. One, this summer, our summer school tuition, in the past, if you tried to take summer school at the community colleges, the tuition was almost three times as high as in the fall and spring because our teachers are only hired for nine months. And so in the summer, we had to subsidize and it had to be like, it was like a for-profit enterprise basically for summer school. But it stopped people from taking summer classes because of that. So this summer, we're able to offer all of our summer school classes at the exact same price that they are during the year, which is $131 per credit. Pretty low. And on top of that, PEL, which still exists right now despite everything going on federally, now has a separate pool for summer. So back in the day, when you got PEL, if you wanted to attend summer school, you had to like couple off a piece of your PEL during fall and spring to use for summer. Now, there's a separate pool for summer. So if you take two or three classes, you're often eligible for a PEL now in the summer, if you're eligible during the year, and that can cover your tuition. So we're really excited. If you're thinking about coming back or you want to continue, summer's a great time. And we also chose 20 classes that we're going to let run, no matter what the enrollment is, because we found them to be really critical to students continuing to their degree. So they're like our gen ed requirements, math, English, history, Hawaiian Studies 107, which is Hawaii Center of the Pacific. So check out our, I'll put a link to that in the chat as well, our application and our class availability. And then the other is that our fall enrollment is also open right now, so you can apply for fall and summer. And thank you to the generosity of the ledge. Thank you for Neighborhood Board for always supporting us in legislative matters. We will have scholarships for those who want to pursue Mental Health Tech Certificate, which is basic psychology, conflict resolution mediation, and trauma-informed care. So if you're interested in pursuing a mental health career, we have a basic certificate. This year, we're launching a one-year certificate. And we've applied for an associate's and a bachelor's, but those are still, we got to get them through the system. So we'll see. But yeah, come on down. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Mahalo.
Chancellor, thank you so much for your report and mahalo for continuing to be a reasonable voice when it comes to costs in our college car. We appreciate all the support that's helpful to get our people into higher education. So mahalo for being an advocate there. Members online, questions for the VCC? Any public members online? Board members here and present? Community members present? None. Thank you. Just some mahalo. Artist, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate your work. We're going to go back. Myle, how's your, your audio okay now? Try. Okay, we're still not getting your audio in on our side. Maybe try calling, Myle. We'll go try that instead of on webex. Text me if you need the information. Okay, we're going to move on to University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture, Human Resources. Is Auntie Ilima here this evening? Okay, mahalo. We're going to go ahead and go on to Hawaii Job Corps. Ms. Julie, thank you for being here, Ms. Julie. We look forward to your report.
Aloha, everyone. Julie Dugan, representing Hawaii Job Corps. And I'm glad I followed Artist because we are all so excited. We have two students that are currently attending Windward Community College that are going to be walking on Friday. The first young man is going to be walking with his associates in liberal arts. The second young lady is going to be receiving a certificate as a mental health technician. So again, the partnership is strong. So please, community, help spread the word that students can start their college career as an option after completing their initial program goals at Hawaii Job Corps. So hopefully, Artist, you're still on the call because I want to recognize you. We were recently at the Gabi Pahinui Festival, and I was able to introduce her to the young man who's completing his associate. And she spent a considerable amount of time talking story to him about his completion and his goal. And afterwards, he told me, I'm so thrilled, Auntie Julie, I got to speak with the head lady at Windward Community College. So I think that just speaks to Artist, her down-to-earth personality and her approachability as a chancellor. So mahalo, Artist.
Mahalo yo oi, Julie. It's such a great partnership. And we've been doing this for over a decade, I think almost two decades now with Job Corps. So it's great to have students walking across the stage. Mahalo.
Thank you, thank you. And I think one of our many graduates is now a board member. Ms. Canela was one of our, our students that graduated from your program and has now gone on to a bachelor's, a master's. So the program's working. So spread the word. It's not just the initial career training. We can help them get started on their, their career goals or their college goals. My second announcement is that I think for the 20th year, we're supporting the city and county, their Memorial Day Lay Project. So we will have, next week, we'll have a group of landscapers out at the Coco Head Botanical Gardens. They will use their skills to cut ploom areas that will be boxed and watered and shipped off to various agencies, kapuna groups, senior citizens that will fill them, the lays. And the Boy Scouts will lay them on the gravesite of the veterans. So very meaningful event that we will continue. My last announcement is I'm happy to report that our staffing is going great. The only current opening we have is for residential advisors. So if you know anyone in the Waimeaalo community that's looking for afternoon, evening work, that could be an opportunity for you. You can contact me directly. My email is in the agenda at dugan.julie@jobcorp.org. And it's a great opportunity for Waimeaalo residents. In fact, currently, the majority of our residential advisors are Waimeaalo residents, right? Short commute. So thank you very much.
Auntie Julie, thank you so much for your time and mahalo nui for your services. Members online, questions for Hawaii Job Corps? Seeing none. Anyone from the public online? Great. Board members present? Comment? Go ahead, Canela.
Aloha, my name is Canela. I just wanted to mahalo Julie and Artist for recognizing me and also for being mentors in my life. Being a 29-year homeless individual in Hawaii, I sort of beat a lot of statistics that was put up against me. So mahalo for being my mentor and also recognizing me today. I look forward to continuing to be an inspiration for those who look up to me and those I work with in social service. So mahalo again for the recognition.
Thank you. Mahalo, nui. Myle, we're going to try one more time. Okay, we're still not getting any audio. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize so much for the technical difficulties. I can see and hear all of you, but I don't know what's happening on my end with my computer. Aloha, my name is Myle Asam. I am the Executive Director, representing Hui Malama Okekai. Just some updates. So our Ho'ike for our kukulu after-school program is this Friday. Our ka'au vela, summer program begins June 9th. It's four weeks. It runs until July 3rd. It's for our fourth through eighth grade. We've also partnered with Aluli'ke, so we are able to offer a handful of paid internship for older O'peo, if anybody's interested. We will also, we partnered with SNAP and we're, we're doing O'peo cooking classes beginning July 7th. And our next community event is a hala presentation on Friday, May 23rd. It begins at 5:00 PM. So if anyone is interested in participating in any of our programs or volunteering, please contact us anytime. Our office number is 808-259-20.
Our office number is 808-259-2030. And then you can email info@hui malama okekai or admin@hui malama okekai.org. And if you guys have any questions now, I would be happy to address any of them.
Miley, thank you so much. Before we go into questions, do you have any update from the Grow Good Hawaii partnership with Hui Malama Okekai? Initially, folks are supposed to give an update a few months ago, and then we had some cancellations and reschedules. And so we weren't able to get that update. But are you aware of that project or have any information to share about that project too?
Yes, yes, I actually do. We are in the process of kind of hanahoying that. So the project was one of the many projects that were directly affected by this new administration and the cuts that are being made and, and the chaos that's occurring right now. And so the fun, funding that project were frozen. And so we, we had to put everything on hold because we really didn't know what was going to happen. And as we all know, it's a pretty chaotic time. But we, we are moving forward. We've had some other funding come through and we're, you know, in typical community fashion. We are pivoting and figuring it out and we will hold on more. And so as soon as we finalize that, I will share out at the next, myself or Shalia will, will share out. We just have to kind of push things back for that, that little pause that we all experienced. But we will update you soon and the project is still a go.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you. Members online, questions for Hui Malama Okekai? Seeing none. Any public members online? None. Members present? Canela?
Hello, Miley. This is Canela. I just wanted to ask for the Aluli'ke paid internships. Do the OPOs have to go through Aluli'ke for their application process? Or could they just go to you to start the application for the paid internships?
They can come to us. They can come directly to us and we can walk them through that.
Mahalo. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Miley, thank you so much for working through the difficulties. Thank you so much for your service.
Mahalo Nui.
Okay, Kako, we're gonna move on. Waimea Nalo Health Center?
Aloha.
Aloha. Hi Jasmine, thank you for being here. The time is yours.
Thank you for having me. My name is Jasmine. I wanted to share a few announcements from the Health Center this evening. One, there was recently a question about our Olalo Hawaii classes, so I wanted to share when that is. So that is open to everyone. And it's every Monday from 9:00 to 10:00 AM with Kumuu Carol Silva. And you can attend via Zoom and you don't have to RSVP. But we also have some in-person spots. And for those, you would call Jennifer at 954-7162. I'll put that in the chat. But just wanted to share that information and invite everyone who's interested. Secondly, I wanted to share about measles. We know a lot of families have gotten letters from the Department of Education and from the schools. And we wanted to share that the best way to protect your Ohana from measles is with the measles, mumps, and rubella vaccine. Two doses of that is 97% effective at preventing measles. So I wanted to share that the vaccine is available at the Health Center and anyone interested in getting that can call us at 259-7948. And if you have any questions or concerns about measles or the vaccine, our family medicine providers are here to answer questions and help. So you can call that same phone number with any questions that you have. Mahalo. Lastly, I wanted to share that we are hiring and there are positions open in several areas, medical, dental, human resources, and more. So anyone interested in our positions can visit waimeanalohealth.org/careers. I'll put that link in the chat as well. Those are my announcements this evening. Thank you.
Jasmine, thank you so very much for presenting this evening. Members online, questions for Waimea Nalo Health Center? All right, seeing none. Any members online from the public? None. Members present? None. Community members? None. Jasmine, I just have a quick update. Could we at some point maybe get a report out on how the farmers market is doing? Maybe in a quarterly report perhaps, what you folks are seeing as far as what is being requested from the community, those participating? Just, just maybe some numbers so that we can start to track a little bit about how engaged we might be able to grow the farmers market. I know we have some relationship to Waimea Nalo Ag. And so I definitely think there's room for growth, I believe, perhaps. But just, just perspective from, from you folks and as the organizers or any of the participants. I know Kanani participates as well. But it'd be great to just hear maybe some updates as you can.
Yeah, I'll be happy to get that. I know Jennifer came to a meeting previously and so thank you for connecting her. We are looking for more vendors that can provide produce. So I know that's been a challenge. It continues to be a challenge. So we're constantly looking for vendors. We have had to cancel the last couple, whether it was for weather or vendors not being able to come out. So we are looking for more vendors if anyone's interested. And I'll get more information from Jennifer as well.
Okay, I'm also curious because, you know, we've had a longstanding farmers market. I think it's on like a Thursday morning down at the beach park. And it's dwindled down to just one, one or two vans now, one or two people. I'm curious if they have an invitation to this one as well, if there might be a way to include them. I'm also curious, Auntie Barb, I have to mahalo Auntie Barb because she's, she's kept the, the care of those farmers market vendors on my, my to-do list. But I don't know the organization for that. Is that come through the city? If Director Sealan could, could come back on and ask, answer the question. Is the farmers market held at Waimea Nalo Beach Park through a city program? Either Director or Irene, maybe if we can take a note on that and trying to find out.
I'll check in, Chair, and then follow up.
Mahalo. I just wanted to see if we could get some of the contact information because I, I, I've seen it dwindle down to just one or two vans. And, and if there's another opportunity for them to come and share their produce with our community, I can't imagine that they wouldn't want to. And/or maybe on our side, it's an opportunity to go and be more productive there. Anyway, just some, some thoughts in that.
Yeah, we'd love, we'd love that contact information.
Great. Mahalo. Seeing and hearing no other questions. We mahalo you for your service. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Members, we're gonna move on. Waimea Nalo Hawaiian Homestead Association. Hearing none. Bellows Air Force Station, Major Chen. Hearing none. Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Chair, Board, Community. I'm Lieutenant O'Hara. Christie is at a family reunion, so she couldn't make it today. So just for this month's update, there's really not a whole lot going on. But just for marking your calendars, on July 13th, we'll be doing the canoe regatta at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. And then in August, the 8th to the 10th is the airshow. So we'll be headlining the Blue Angels as well as the F-22 demo team and then a whole bunch of other performers. So just mark your calendars. We're excited. A whole lot of planning going into all this and we'd be happy to see all of you there. So pending any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you so much for being here, sir. Members online, questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Seeing none. Any public members online? Seeing none. Members present? Kuike?
For the record, this is Kuike. I got a question for a canoe in Marine Corps. If you can answer this tonight. If not, you can follow up with a response. Can you provide us an update on the status of the interment vault that has been in the planning for the past decade or so? I heard that it's creeping up that almost Paul, you know, so if you can provide us some information tonight.
Yeah, it's not going to be a definitive answer, unfortunately. But there is a lot of progress being made as far as getting this, the paperwork and the process to the right people, getting the right approvals. It is a high on the priority. It's just about every week that we brief the CEO on it. And it's, it's something that he is constantly wanting to get approved and taken care of. So it is without, I can't put a date or like a timeline that is exact or clear, but it is a priority.
Mahalo question, Chair. Okay, so mahalo for sharing that. Is that something that the CEO will likely get done prior to the change in arms?
For his changeover? I, he has about a year left. So I think that the, the trajectory that it's like the momentum that we've gained, I think it's very likely.
Mahalo. Last thing, Chair. If there's anything that this community of Waimea Nalo can assist with, June Knowles, right? But just if you can send it up to Command, we're here. I'm just gonna speak for myself and maybe our hui afkanaka. The concern is there is an excess of 3,000 EV kupuna remains. Yeah, that's sitting there in storage. And before we kind of the kupuna, yeah, that there was comments made about three years ago that there isn't, how do we put it, enough people with the wherewithal to malamadhi these kupuna before we put them, before we ho'it them back into theaina. I just want to say the community of Waimea Nalo is here on standby, ready to assist and help in the wrapping and carrying of those kupuna. Yeah, and the transfer back, you know, to the journey to Paul. So you can send it and you can, I mean, I'm pretty sure you can send it over to June Chair and then you can send that up to Command as well.
Yeah, we really appreciate that. And we also appreciate all the involvement with the Waimea Nalo Council. So every opportunity we have to come over, whether it's with the community or other members, we always look forward to it. We do want to get stuff done, so.
Mahalo, Chair Yoda.
Thank you. Any other board members present? None. Community? Hearing none. Mahalo Nui for your report. I just have a quick question. We're in sea turtle nesting period. And every year, we kind of go through the same cycles. And I'm just curious if and who is doing the monitoring? If we can just vocalize who's doing the monitoring of the sea turtle nesting out at Hunananiho? Or the training area?
Well, so we have our own staff that monitor our location. So whatever beachfront that we are responsible for, that's what we monitor. And then any training that we do do is, it's restricted, right? So if we do identify a certain area, we have those training areas blocked off. So it is, it's very rigorous and thorough as far as our own, like we have patrols that go through and check the beaches and everything, so.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because driving on the, the base last week or this past week and then seeing military vehicles on the shore for training was kind of like a...
So they, they do walkthroughs prior to everything. So people aren't just blindly, you know, ripping through everything. And then that also does affect the, the community as well. So people that either live on base or do come to the beaches, their, you know, sites that are blocked off, it's very obvious. And we try not to really vocalize that, like announce it, like, oh, hey, look, don't come to this area because then it might just draw people in, right? So we have our PMO, like so our, our base police force, they're aware of these things as well. And so they do like beach patrols and everything.
Great. And then just, just for my own, is this happening every day, twice a day, four times a day? I mean, turtles aren't gonna just wait for you to walk across the beach. So who's, like, what is that schedule like?
I don't, I couldn't tell you the exact rotation plan, but I do know that it is at least daily. I could try and get some kind of rotation plan, schedule to you as far as what the beach patrols look like. But I do know that it will happen throughout the day, probably a couple of times.
Awesome. Yeah, if, if we could get some learning out there, I think that'd be great to share back to the community about what are the processes being taken to ensure that these turtles are given the full flexibility and opportunity on the beach. That would be really great.
Yeah. And, and we don't, we don't disturb or move to accommodate us, right? So we do allow the, the natural process without it. Like, we will sacrifice the training or move the training somewhere else to a different location to accommodate them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
Hearing no other comments? Mahalo. A question, sorry, Canela?
Hi, this is Canela. Does each military base, like Bello Marine Corps Base, do you guys have a list of which beach you guys have like access and rights and monitoring to that the public can see? So like if they see something at Hunananiho, which military base they'll see or whichever base you see? Because like my kids go to Castle, so like if they see it, who do they report to? Like, does the military bases have a list of which beaches you guys monitor?
Off the top of my head, I don't know of some kind of resource like that. It would be rather easy to procure, I'm sure. And then anything that is on our installations is going to be obviously what we monitor ourselves. So the, the easy answer is if you're on our base, we're monitoring it. Outside of the base, we don't have the authority to, so.
Yeah, mahalo. I think we have a baseline of that, Canela, that can be shared. I know we've, we've had that conversation in years past. You have something to add, Kuike?
I was just gonna say, just generally, it's jetty to jetty. Yeah, so from where county is, the 75 acres at Hunananiho, there's that chain link fence to the first jetty is Air Force. And then from that jetty to the next jetty is Marine, right? So we're all of the public camping area, that's all Marines. And then from the jetty to Ka'oha, the point is Air Force again.
And there's different, like, the city and county has certain parameters as well, mix into the, the Marine Corps Base side. Yeah. Okay, we have one last question from Brenda Wong and then we're gonna move on. Brenda?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can answer this, but I was just asking if you knew anything about the replacing of the fence at Hunananiho related more to Bellows? And then there, I heard that there's also entrance on the Bello's side that vehicles can access the beach. And I know there's been a lot of vehicles on the beach at Hunananiho.
For the, well, for the first part, I'm not incredibly up to date for the fence project, but I do know that it was resumed. So the project itself is still ongoing. I believe that there was a pause and then we started up again. So whatever approval or whatever delay there was, we've powered through that. I can provide a much better update as far as any planning or, you know, the status of it for next month. I'm not sure the second part, what, what the question was.
There's just an opening that cars can access the beach from the Bello's side and drive straight onto the beach. That's what I heard.
Is that like a hole in the fence or access through a road or?
It's a little bit of both. And, and it's a boulder trail that was moved to get on and around the jetty. So the Air Force is aware of that, Auntie Brenda?
Okay, great.
Yeah. Perfect. Lieutenant, right?
Yes.
Lieutenant, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate your, your update. Mahalo.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you.
Members, we're gonna move on. Hawaii Army National Guard. Hearing none. Okay, that brings us to 808. We're gonna move on to resident and community concerns and sharing. Miley provided a little bit of an update to 7A, so we're gonna go ahead and skip to 7B, which is also a differo. Raff, Raff is off island, so we mahalo him for their service. They'll provide an update on their events at our next meeting. So we just want to mahalo Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii for their Earth Week events. We're gonna move on to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Community Engagement Program. I listed somebody, but I don't know who's talking where, so. Aloha. Welcome, please. If we could just introduce your folks selves and then the time will be yours. Thank you.
Aloha, no. Aloha, pumehana. Mahalo for having us, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And just to give some introductions, we have myself, Kalea Kaka. I'm honored to serve as your Oha Oahu trustee as well as...
Aloha, I'm Anuhea O'Chan. Live in Kailua, but consider Waimea Nalo home. And before I worked at the Office of Hawaiian And before I worked at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, I was five years as the Assistant Director at Ma'ala Mahonua here in Wa Manalo.
Also joining us this evening is Mark Batanave. He's part of my Akaka team at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And I see our Board Vice Chair, Ku'i Ke. He is a member of OHA as well. So mahalo to the Chair, Vice Chair, and the members of the Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board for welcoming the Office of Hawaiian Affairs this evening to join with you and to open this pilina or further pilina so that we might be able to have this line of communication so that we can, similar to you, be able to stay on the pulse of the needs and concerns of our community and see how we can collaborate and koko'oa with one another. And also share a bit about the history of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We were created in 1978 and our mission remains the same, which is to better the conditions of our native Hawaiian people, which is in alignment with our strategic plan of economic resiliency, education, housing, as well as health. So some of the mea, the handouts that we shared with you this evening, is what OHA does. So this just gives some breadth into the creation of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs as well as what we do and why we exist. And then this part here is the 2024 Office of Hawaiian Affairs Annual Report. So you can learn more of, more of what we do through the year. Okay, and then as well, we shared with you the latest issue of our Kaviola. So this is a publication that we provide out monthly at no charge. This is a nice little piece that was created in-house. So this is Ola Kaii, and also titled Ovaio OHA. So this is a nice coloring book that was created for the Keiki. And so the Keiki and the Ohana can learn of what we do. And it's a beautifully written Mak'olelo Mak'ohine in our mother tongue. We also have our OHA quarterly updates that we're providing to our neighborhood boards. And we have one more. So I heard it shared earlier, but we at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs are also hiring. So if you know anyone within the community, your Ohana, your friends that might be interested and qualified individuals, we are welcoming them. And there is also a signing bonus here that you'll see $5,000. So something to look into and they can look for more information on oha.org. Also to share about the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, we're aboard with nine members of our various islands as well as at-large positions. We, we meet about every first and third Wednesday and Thursday, give or take with what's happening within the community and so forth. And on Wednesdays, we have our committee meetings. We have the beneficiary advocacy and empowerment committee. That committee is regarding most of what we do legislatively and in advocacy with community concerns. And then we have budget and finance, which is pretty self-explanatory and our budgetary things. And then we have our investments and land management. So that includes our investments with our Native Hawaiian Trust Fund as well as our, our land portfolio with our legacy lands as well as lands that we have that bring economic revenue to help our native Hawaiian people. So when I speak of advocacy, much of what we do in this, this pilina within the community and what we do on a community level, on a county level, on a state level, and on a federal level, is regarding EIA. And it's regarding our, our being able to talk within our community and with our legislators, with our elected officials. Aloha to you all and many familiar faces that I got to see earlier and here in person. But that's a lot of what we do in terms of staying on top of what is affecting us on various levels of government. And we provide the legislature our positions, whether we're in support, whether we are in opposition, whether we want to provide comments. And these are matters that affect our native Hawaiian community and beyond our community, our Aina and our surrounding waters. So that's something that we stay on top of throughout the year and especially during our open legislative session. And then we also have our federal advocacy and county, our county level advocacy throughout the islands. But I will also bring up Anu to share more about our budget.
Mahalo.
So right now, OHA is in the process of creating the biennium budget. So it's two years, fiscal year '26 and '27. About two weeks ago, there were meetings available for community members to come and learn about what was on the budget and then give feedback or comment or ask questions. And all of those live streams are available online if people wanted to go and take a look at what, what was shared and then what community feedback came back in the process. And then there are continued meetings for the different paia or the departments to speak specifically to what they're proposing in their budgets coming up in the upcoming two or three weeks, I want to say. And so those meetings are also posted online. If you guys want to see what the different specific line items that departments are asking for and, and sort of the rationale for why they are asking for those budgets, those are also livestreamed and the materials are shared on the website. So, you know, long story short, for OHA's budget, it starts with our Mana'i Ma'oleola Strategic Plan. And then there are a spending, there's a spending cap that's set based on the revenues from the, from the revenues that OHA receives from the funding that is allocated through state general funds and then from the public land trust funds that come in. And so that's the cap. And then there's a percentage of that spending that OHA is allowed to utilize on any given year. And so that's kind of where the baseline is. And then the different paia look at the strategic plan. They determine how their programs and initiatives are gonna move OHA towards that strategic plan. And then they propose to the Board of Trustees what those initiatives will be. And then the community and the public get opportunities to comment on that. And then before the next fiscal year starts, they approve the budget. So that's kind of where we're at. In the packets that you guys receive, there's much more details about the percentages of the budget that come from each of those funding sources. And then, yeah, that's mostly what you guys have provided. But if you watch the live streams or you come to any of the upcoming meetings, you can hear a little bit more about the details. And then, did you want to share about this?
Okay, so just to continue on what Anu was talking about, with our meetings that we have, you can come in person. So the committee meetings are on Wednesdays, generally first and third Wednesdays. And then our board meetings are on Thursdays, first and third Thursdays. So that gives an opportunity for our community to come and testify in person at our, our office space, our boardroom, which is at Na'ala Mukukui, the former Gentry Pacific Design Center. There's also the virtual option to sign on to, to testify. But if you just want to watch, you can go to our website, which is www.oha.org backslash livestream. But I wanted to share one more thing in terms of the creation of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and how that works into with our advocacy and how we're able to provide sponsorships, grants, loans and so forth, and how we're able to exist. So with the creation of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, a large part of our revenue annually is coming from our native Hawaiian crown and government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom, also known as the ceded lands of the public land trusts. So that's part of our advocacy when we're going within the community and when we're talking with our elected officials at the seat legislature to share with them some history and update them, sometimes give a friendly reminder as to the importance of being able to provide that to us. And also in terms of the kuliana of the state to manage and properly steward the lands that they have. And that, for them to know the genesis of these lands, because these are native Hawaiian crown and government lands, truly. So just to kind of give you also a breadth of the stark difference of what we have learned and what should be going to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, also, which means going to our Hawaiian people is, during the Lindelenga administration, at that time, our government was described as cash poor and we had a cap of 15.1 million coming into us. So fast forwarding in time, we worked really hard. There were audits done. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs gathered the reports that were provided from the various entities that are on these lands. And we found that it's been on an honor system and it hasn't been great where the fair market value hasn't been going, I wouldn't even say fair market value, but a value that it should be going to the state so that therefore the state is not getting the funding that it should be getting. And then that in turn means that the native Hawaiians are not getting the amount that they, that we should be. So fast forwarding in time in recent years, we were able to lift that up to 21.5 million. However, in the reports that we did in our due diligence, we found that we should be getting at the very least closer to 79 million. So if you look at 15.1, 21.5, 79 million, that's a big difference. And you can include inflation or not on that. But truly, it should be so much more than, than that. And a part of our work is also working to see if we can get a proper land inventory so we can have that palapala and information to back up in part of what our, our ask is and the kuliana of the state and also going to our grandparent, the federal government. If the state as our parent is not fulfilling that kuliana to take care of us, their child, Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So that is a lot of what we do. And also to give you perspective on that stark difference on what should be going to native Hawaiians in our due diligence, we found that we're getting maybe 3% to 4% of the 20% that we're supposed to be getting. So that is something that we could certainly use your kukua and your, your advocacy, whether it's at the legislature through testimony in person or submitted to be able to help us do what we have to do to directly put that back into our native Hawaiian community, which helps our community as a whole. But I also wanted to leave time, if there's any mana'o, ni na'o.
Mahalo for being here. First and foremost, thank you for the presentation and to your team for joining us. We could easily spend the rest of the evening on this topic. First and foremost, in all the years that I've been on the neighborhood board, this is the first time OHA's made themselves present. And so I want to mahalo you folks for that, for finding time in the schedule to make your native Hawaiian beneficiary communities a priority. And that's a, that's a big deal. It has, you know, highlighted our needs very well in the community for many, many years. And, you know, as you were speaking, several topics popped into my head. And I know it's gonna be at the forefront of many of our community members as well. I would love to invite OHA to participate in native, in the Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board. And I know you folks have a kuliana to all of our native Hawaiian people. I recognize that. And I'm gonna be selfish and call it out anyway and ask that we figure out a way to make OHA's presence much more, you know, just a clearer line of communication and work with the community. Because we have generations of data that can serve OHA. And OHA has a platform that should be serving these generations of people. And I think it's time.
Yes.
So I'm gonna turn it over to our, our board members online. Any questions for OHA at this time?
In the meanwhile, I would also like to share with you in terms of us being in the community that part of our bylaws is to visit the various inhabited native Hawaiian islands and to be able to be present in the evening hours to hear the needs and concerns of our, of our Hawaiian people in the community. And then the next day, we have our board meetings on that island. And then also, as the Oahu trustee, I saw the value in having these island community meetings. So I had asked that we have that in time that was made possible. So what I do is I try to target the communities that are heavy concentrative or native Hawaiian people. And oftentimes, that's our homesteads. So we've done them in Wa'ana'aiside, Kapolea, Papakolea, Wa Manalo. In fact, that's the first time that I met Ku'i Ke. It was at our Wa Manalo Waho Island Community Meeting that evening. And, and then last year, we had one at our boardroom, a more consolidated effort on that one. But this has been the hope to be able to reach our neighborhood boards and in this way. And I also wanted to share in the, we've gone to a few so far before this one. And we've had it where the sentiment that you had shared in terms of being able to have a regular spot here to maybe do three-minute announcements or something like that, that was expressed in the various neighborhood boards. So it was, we had the Kulio'okele'aikii Neighborhood Board as well as the Ko'ola'oa Neighborhood Board that had shared that.
Mahalo, thank you.
Yeah.
Seeing no hands from our members. Anyone from the public online? Great. Members present? Okay. Ku'i Ke?
Mahalo Chair for the time. Mahalo trustee Akaka and your team and the administration for being here tonight. You know, it's been a long time coming. I've been at OHA just over a year. Yeah, serving our Lahui. And since ever since, you know, I've been in conversations with CEO, Harakopo Ha'ana Stacey Ferrera, you know, about being in native Hawaiian communities. You know, our small humble community of Wa Manalo is, is a special one at that. According to the last census, you know, this is the highest concentration, the highest, this is the community with the highest concentration of native Hawaiians.
I remember you saying that that night we met.
Yeah. And, you know, in addition to that, you know, 49% of all of the land here in Wa Manalo is within the DHHL Trust. And in addition to that, I believe it's about 30% more Aina is within the state corpus. So OHA has kuliana much more than we, I, I think, believe right now within this community, especially given that we're on the most eastern point of Oahu, you know, the, where much of the residents of Hawaii live, just over a million. Not only that, we have three military arms occupying space in Wa Manalo. You know, in spaces that our native Hawaiians only get to access if they work there. You know, and I want to say, you know, the creation of OHA was 1978 Constitutional Convention. And with that, you know, it was established within the state constitution, state law, you know, that a percentage of all revenues derived, you know, from the ceded land public trust, you know, would be set aside for native Hawaiians and to be administered through the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And it was later codified in the 1983 Legislative Body, you know, that, that percentage was 20%. And so we know from 1983 moving forward, actually 1978 moving forward, that we haven't received such percentage. And this is what we've been trying to educate our community here in Wa Manalo. Is that correct, Chair?
Correct.
You know, why? Is because it's very important that we have facts that we, you know, okahua ma'ua mahopike kukulu, that, you know, the site selection become, is first, step one. And then later, we continue to build. So it's very important for the pulupula, the keke of Wa Manalo and abroad to base their opinions and facts. Why? Is because for much too long, Wa Manalo has been at the forefront of all of the important, critical, pivotal points in Hawaiian, modern Hawaiian history. Let's start with Kalamaha Valley. Yeah, let's start with Kalamaha Valley. Let's move forward to the Wa Manalo Beach Evictions. Let's move forward to one year after that, the establishment, yeah, in 1985, the establishment of Halauli Kula'ulani, you know, which is the first Hawaiian emergent actually that was created. It was pre-Punaleo. It was actually the same year that the Manaleo of Kauai, yeah, gathered under a pavilion on the west side of Kauai and made the choice, the decision to educate their mo'opuna through the Manaleo, through our O'lelo Mak'ohine. Wa Manalo made that exact choice here, yeah. And today, you know, one of our charter schools occupy the same space and we continue that legacy. Move forward, Wa Manalo Health Center. The establishment of Wa Manalo Health Center in the early 1990s, it was established by five mothers because there was no programs for native Hawaiian women and children here on the east side of Wa Manalo. And let's roll back a little bit. Yeah, the early 80s, there was no buses in Wa Manalo. And let's roll back a little bit, yeah, the early eighties, there was no buses in Waianae. So my grandpa had to put twenty of his mo'opuna inside his his car and drive them to Kula every morning until they organized community and got school buses to run out to Waianae. And that's how we get transportation now here in Waianae. Not only that, the occupation at Makapu, nineteen ninety one, ninety two, ninety three. Yeah, with the passing of the apology law. And understanding that all of these pivotal points within Hawaiian history, you know, we've we've been able to leverage that and exercise that to control our natives. Twenty nineteen, fast forward, punananiho. Fast forward even further, the last two years, we've been at the forefront battling the wind energy, offshore wind energy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, staying informed, being informed and really sticking to the facts and making sure that our people understand. Why? Is because part of the Public Land Trust that was set aside in nineteen seventy eight and codified in nineteen eighty three is the submerged lands. In nineteen fifty nine, when the state became an entity, joined the union, yeah, approximately two million acres of public lands, government lands was transferred to the state of Hawaii. Of that two million acres, one point eight million was retained because approximately two hundred sixty, two hundred forty thousand acres went to DHHL. Where is those lands now? I'm not asking you trustee, because I know the answer.
Yeah.
It's out there. The problem is we've been led to believe something different.
Yeah.
Over the years, over the generations, the stories have changed. It's time for us to reclaim our our mo'olelo, reclaim our stories, reclaim the facts. And then that way we can reclaim our identity.
Aye.
The last administration, the last two administrations at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, that was one of the priority focuses. The biggest questions came out was who are we? What's our identity? How do we identify as a people? Not just our cultural, not just our spiritual identity, yeah, not just our geographical identity. Yeah, we're part of the blue continent. No, our political identity as well. Yeah, and I love the fact that you brought up, yeah, and that it's a priority for the office because it's a priority for Waianae as well. So like I've extended, you know, the aloha to a representative from Marine Corps Base. Waianae stands by, ready, makokau.
Mahalo. I I wanted to speak on that when you had mentioned in terms of um how the community can kukua. I'm interested in uh looking at how we as the Office of Hawaiian Affairs can be a part of that as well.
Well, we go and list.
Absolutely trustee and Chair, if you can entertain me just for one minute more.
Please.
Part of the responsibility of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is to assess all of the policies and procedures of every other government entity within the state jurisdiction.
Constitutionally mandated.
It's come, we are constitutionally mandated to assess every action, every line item in their budget that impacts and affects native Hawaiians. And quite frankly, it's hundred percent.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I want to add to that, that the native Hawaiian peoples is the only injured party in Hawaii. That's why the clause in the nineteen fifty nine Admissions Act for the state of Hawaii to administer the nineteen twenty one Hawaiian Homes Commissions Act. That's why the nineteen seventy eight convention, yeah, showed us today that ho, because the Kanaka Maoli, because the native Hawaiian people are the only injured party in Hawaii, we gotta create laws embedded within the constitution to make pono. Yeah, to make right. All the wrongs that have been done to the native Hawaiian people, to the injured party, we gotta start to make right. The problem is the state never necessarily have the political will to follow through.
Absolutely.
Their commitment to the native Hawaiian people. And that's why the Office of Hawaiian Affairs was created. And the assessments of these departments, I can promise you, you have a strong case here in Waianae when it comes to LFA, when it comes to coconut rhinoceros beetle, when it comes to coastal erosion, when it comes to sewage management, waste management, when it comes to DOT traffic, we got them all. When it comes to DOE, yeah, making sure our keke have the proper education and resources that they need to uplift themselves out of poverty. You know, that's why the Office of Hawaiian Affairs was created in nineteen seventy eight. That's why I've committed myself to work at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And that's why I believe you standing here tonight in front of us trustee and I mahalo you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Waianae is standby, we makokau, we ready.
Awesome.
Everything from ivi kupuna to navigating the stars, we got you covered. You just let us know where you want us to build the bridge and we'll show up. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to also touch upon what Kuikia was talking about in terms of, I believe that falls under A as well in terms of the constitutionally mandated law in place when it comes to OHA's kakoa, the enforcement and with the collaboration with the various government agencies where there needs to be that clear understanding that but that's part of the education for a community to know and for the county, state and federal to know that, for instance, and I had mentioned this um in the last neighborhood board meeting that when, let's say, what happened in Lahaina and there was a what what is referred to as a temporary um landfill site, that is technically native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands of our Hawaiian kingdom. Therefore, the Maui County, those that are involved in that are by law constitutionally mandated to consult and go to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. So I would believe so as to avoid certain pili kia. But um that's part of the law and that's part of where we kukua with one another to help each other in terms of the decisions that need to be made when it comes to our lands and when how this affects our people, our lands, our skies and our surrounding waters.
Mahalo Nui. Thank you for that exchange. I appreciate it.
Mahalo and mahalo Kuikia for opening up as what as you did in the breadth of the history, the the late to recent history with with Waianae and this community as a whole. I I look forward to seeing how we can kukua more in terms of specifically looking into this area, this ahupua and um how that can be a conversation with upcoming island community meetings that we have and with presentations. And I think I see some options. And we did have um uh we did have the Windward Community College. They hosted us, our first one that we had on the side. And um I'm sorry, did I say Lee Word Windward Community College? And they hosted us and they shared with us some of what they do. And it was just so impressive. And that was one of the many examples of the different um entities that came to share with us.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Kanela, you had something to add? And then we'll go back to Kuikia and then we'll have community members here and then we're gonna move on.
Aloha, uh Kanela. So a few questions just came through that conversation. How is OHA including the houseless counts, concerns and voices for your guys' initiative?
Mahalo. That's a really good question. So housing is a part of one of our directions and pillars. And I think that's that's something that I'd be interested in learning more about because maybe Anu, do you have more information on that? Okuikia, you're Aina Momona, so if you can.
Mahalo and Chair, if I if I may, for the record, my my title at OHA is a Director of OIV Wellbeing and Aina Momona. However, I also double back um as Director of Housing.
Nice.
So we we receive all of our data, right? We aggregate all of the data that the state and the counties operate with. Yeah, and then we bring all of that data in and that way we can make assessments. But it's very important, it's very critical to understand two things here. The state procurement process as well as OHA's limitations within the ceiling of the budget that we're allocated. Yeah, so to answer your question, we're always, we we're front facing agency. Yeah, and because of that, um we have a we have agents here at OHA that receive everyone, beneficiaries, non beneficiaries that come to the front door. In addition to that, I know that the administration and with the support of the BOT, yeah, is very open to going into communities and engaging with the specific communities because what we also believe that one solution not can fit all. And even within communities, right, there's there's micro climates within communities that we we really got to address. Because as you know, here in Waianae, we can have, we can have, you know, four, five bedroom, four, five bedroom house right on the highway that's priced right about one point one million. And then our houseless communities right across the street. So we're committed here at OHA to address all of that. When it comes to housing, specific to housing, yeah, we don't yet have lands that we can build homes on.
Well, we do.
We 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 do, we do. However, we don't necessarily have the entitlements to do so.
Yes, it's right. There needs to be change in law.
Right, so we don't yet have lands that we can build homes on, turnkey, ready to go. So part of the reason why Anu and I are at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is to assist in developing those strategies and then furthermore diving down into building our tactics on how we can build a step ladder to achieve homeownership, not only for those who qualify for market, but those who need it the most as well. And the input on that, again, we're front facing agency. Go ahead.
Sorry, could you define what like a front facing agency means?
Means that from the hours of operation, our doors open for anybody to consult. And I can tell you, since I've been there for a year, um I've helped.
We'll let him know where your office is. Yeah, we'll get you his office number.
Well, I can tell you, no, no wait for.
And his home address.
Perfect. Like, you already have my number.
Yeah.
Right, you already have my number, but no wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, because no matter what, this isn't only an OHA problem. As we said, it it's mandated in the state constitution. Yeah, that it's technically everyone's kuliana to malama kanaka. It's OHA's kuliana to ensure that everyone else is doing their job. Because it's not only OHA's job to malama kanaka. You understand? Like, I think that's part of the misunderstanding over the years. Oh, that's the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. This is Department of Transportation. There is no separation. There is no separation. The DOT have kuliana to malama kanaka. OHA's kuliana is to convene the kanaka with DOT to ensure that DOT is meeting the needs of the kanaka. Yeah, there's a Department of Housing within the state. There is departments that malama housing. It's OHA's kuliana to also convene those departments, those leaders with communities to make sure that everything connect, we be built, you know, create constellations, we build constellations so we can navigate through all of our people's needs. Does that answer your question?
I would like to expand on that as well.
Please.
So uh mahalo for that Kuikia. So first of all, I want to mahalo you for sharing your lived experience and um yeah, and awesome to hear of your accolades since then and how you have the mentorship of those joining us this evening. So various points I wanted to go on regarding data. So when we go to, we have info briefings at the legislature annually. And for instance, if we're talking to the Ways and Means Committee, the Senate Ways and Means and to the House Finance, it was brought up to us a little more than a couple of years back in terms of, hey, OHA, you're saying you're doing all these good things, which we are, but what do you have to show for it? So since then, I have I have asked our um our administration for us to work on a dashboard on our website and then be able to share it on our social media and be able to um print it out in palapala form so that we can put it into our community as well to show the funding that we are getting and how it's going directly back into our community. And um when Kuikia is talking about front facing, oftentimes people are left to wonder, well, what, why does OHA exist? What does OHA do? How does that affect me? We do so much, but oftentimes our name gets lost along the way because the funding that we provide to organizations, they're the ones that receive this funding and then they provide it to the various individuals and that receive it. And so oftentimes, OHA is not mentioned. But uh since then, um I have asked within the last couple of years to have it when we are providing this funding that from front to back, everything in between, when it comes to paperwork, when it comes to signing and everything, that those recipients see the OHA logo, so that they know the mission of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and see how we are affecting them, their ohana and the community. And I also wanted to share, when we have these island meetings throughout the islands on Oahu, we have site visits. And we often visit uh different um organizations and entities and places that it would be good for our trustees and our administration to visit to see what is happening or their organizations that we have kukua with, we have funded and see how it's positively impacting the the um community. So for instance, one of them um was Halekepa in more the um Eva, Eva side.
Anu.
Yes, and so uh we um Venus had welcomed us and I'm so happy that we have been able to provide funding to them. And part of my personal um initiatives as well is um beyond our advocacy regarding our native Hawaiian Crown and Government lands of our public, of our Hawaiian kingdom, also known as the Public Land Trust, is regarding trafficking. Because we have such a unfortunate high percentage of our native Hawaiian people that are affected by this. And um we've had the bravery of those that have had lived experiences share share that with us, including at our Waianae Island Community Meeting. And that's something that I really want to have more of a spotlight on and be able to provide our community with the statistics that unfortunately this does exist and how we can combat that. And that has to do with all the data that we're trying to gather and make use of. And it provides breadth to why it's important for the legislature to fund us.
Mahalo. I I really appreciate the dialogue. Um I'm gonna ask if any of our public members have any comments for OHA? Questions? None? Okay. I do want to wrap us up on this conversation and and invite a relationship to be built from this point. I look forward to, yeah, yeah, um uh to staying in touch. But you know, what is the best way for us in the community to engage with you folks communications wise?
Yes, um I will be providing you my business card.
Okay.
And then we'll have, you'll have my contact information as well as those that are here. And then we can have that further, the open line of communication. So whether it be in person or virtual, I think quarterly is sustainable. We can try monthly, you know, whether it's me or representative from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. But um yeah, if it's as simple as like a three minute updates, announcement on what's going on, I think that would be great for both ways and invite you all to come to visit with us and have community concerns shared or celebrations as well. And then that way we can kukua one another.
Awesome. Trustee and your team, thank you guys so much for joining us this evening.
You're welcome.
Mahalo. Um we have online Jennifer, Jennifer from um Lift Hawaii. Jennifer, are you still present?
I am here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience. And then just for a heads up, are there any other public um resident community concerns or announcements that need to come from anyone online? If you can just put your hand up online, that would be helpful. And then for folks here in person, Lily, are you folks commenting tonight? No? You're gonna share something this evening, sir? Okay, perfect. We'll we'll go through the online ones and then we'll come right back to you. Thanks for your patience. Okay, I don't see any other hands. So Jennifer, go ahead with your update and your invitation.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say this is my first neighborhood board meeting and I am deeply impressed by all that you do and um thank you. Um I am a member of this community and I am uh deeply inspired by what I've heard and seen and witnessed tonight. So thank you. I'm here to share an opportunity for people from the Alice Community, Asset Limited, Income Constrained Employed Uh households in our community. I'm gonna just, because I know I have a very short amount of time, I'm just gonna cut to the chase. Lift High Foundation was started a year ago to invest in the people and families of Hawaii to create stable, healthy, fulfilling lives and thereby allow our communities to flourish. We do that through paid training to good jobs pathways into healthcare. This complements some of the great work we heard about from Windward Community College earlier, Job Corps. So I want to be very clear, this is a complement to other pathways. But we believe we're reaching perhaps a different community. We've had four cohorts of trainees uh so far, some of whom are just finishing their first year working at Straub Medical Center. A couple of things I think I wanted to share that are unique about our training. It's not only free, but it's paid. No experience required. We compress our training so that people can go from starting to learn to jobs as quickly as possible and start transforming lives. Uh we partner with employers to make sure training actually leads to a job. That's where the breakdown tends to occur in our experience. And so we've partnered with Waipu Civic Health and upcoming Ohana Pacific Health. And so we've partnered with Waipu Civic Health and, um, upcoming Ohana Pacific Health. So really, the reason I'm here is because we are doing a training with Ohana Pacific Health, which is the largest post-acute care provider in Hawaii. And we're doing training for a Windward Side Employment Opportunities, specifically Anne Pearl Rehab and Nursing Facility in Kanihohe. Um, we are currently recruiting, uh, we actively recruit, um, individuals in the community through affordable housing developments, nonprofit reach-out, word-of-mouth, particularly from our graduates. We provide that training and then we do 12 months of mentoring afterwards. I have shared through a friend with Yu Kimione, a flyer. Uh, and our training is coming up June 16 to, it's June 16 to July 18. And we are looking for people who might be interested, no experience in healthcare required.
Jennifer, thank you so much. And just for you, my name is pronounced Kimiona.
Kimiona. I appreciate that. You know, someone called me Jessica today and I felt so worried about telling them and I just said.
Don't worry ever. That's your name.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Um, members, any questions for Jennifer? Jennifer, I did send over your information to all board members, so they do have the, the, um, flyer that you sent out and then we'll make sure that we share that with our group as well. Um, we'll, we'll get that distributed. But if there is any comments or questions, um, can they reach out to you and at what?
Absolutely. Sure, it's on the flyer, but oh my gosh, and you know, we don't memorize phone numbers anymore, but you can reach us at eight oh eight five eight three seven four one eight or jmeehan@lifthigh.org. And there's a link to our application form on that flyer.
Fantastic. I don't see any questions from members online. Anyone from the public? Questions? Members present? Jenna, uh, Canelo, go ahead.
Jennifer, um, Canelo, um, board member. Does the individual that sign up have to be 18 years or older?
Yes, they have to be 17 years or older. Uh, in some cases, Waipu Civic Health, 18 years or older. They have to be, have the right to work in Hawaii. And depending on the job, uh, whether it is for a long-term care facility, you would not be able, you would have to be able to pass a background check. In other, uh, jobs, particularly in the hospital space, there is more flexibility there. And so we've had formerly incarcerated individuals go through our program and enter into work. But it's really based on the federal mandates and then ultimately in hospitals employer preference.
Okay, one more, one more question.
Sure.
Is an individual able to apply for this program and also try to get their GED high school diploma? At the same time?
Prerequisite. No, they have to have their GED, high school diploma. Either one's fine.
Before applying?
They can apply, but they can't, you know, we keep them in our records, but they have to complete it before they can be officially considered.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Canelo, thank you. Mahalo. Anyone from the public? Questions for Jennifer? Seeing none. Jennifer, thank you so much for bringing your work to our community in this way. We appreciate the connection. Mahalo for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity. Take care. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Please come right up here if you can introduce yourself for the community and then we're, we're happy to take your report. Thank you.
My name is David Lukey. I see some of the members of the board were able to take a trip to the CDFA facility. And now that you've familiarized yourself with it, I'd like to follow up with you. Maybe get some information. I've got the three, three questions for the board. That, um, fruit fly program that they have in California, they acquire sterile fruit flies from two different facilities. One of the facilities is in Guatemala, um, the other one's up here on Waikupunaha Street. That the Waikupunaha facility dumps 6,000 gallons a day of R3 water. The Guatemala facility treats their water to drinking standards. Um, the difference is that, um, our three wastewater is not only undrinkable, it's not safe for human contact. People who come in contact with our three wastewater are instructed to wash it off with soap and water. They're dumping 2.2 million gallons every year directly on the ground, right above my house. I would like to know if the, the board agrees that the Waimeanalo facility should treat their water to the same level that the Guatemala facility does. And I don't understand why, um, Waimeanalo gets what's essentially sewage dumped on the ground up there and why Guatemala gets drinking water. So that's the first question for the board is, um, do you agree that the Waimeanalo plant, the facility should be treating their water to the same level that, um, the Guatemala facility is?
Yeah, David, thank you so much for the question. The board has not taken any official position on anything related to the Mediterranean Fruit Fly Facility operations at this time. I definitely don't mind hearing the questions and putting it on the agenda for us to take a position. Certainly, you know, what I can share and what was presented from the members that participated in that was that, um, some of the concerns that were raised were questioned and we were able to tour the facility in detail to every pretty much every question that we wanted to see, they opened the doors to us. And I know that that's, might not be a big deal for some, but that's a big deal for us.
Was that, was that one of the questions?
Yes, it was. We, we looked at the water system. We asked about the water quality reports, which we were, that's our kuleana is to go and get these reports, which we were told are public. And so that is a part of our process currently is to go to some of these things that were highlighted to us, told to us, and then we're gonna follow up on that. Yeah, so by all means, share your questions, but I, I know tonight the board is not ready to take a position on those things. But please ask the questions so we can document them and then rest assured that we are in the follow-up process. We questioned pretty much the authenticity of every aspect of their function, including why they're still doing business in Waimeanalo. But I, I do want to say that, you know, we were treated very, very well by the facility and were given full operation to move through and question all aspects of it. And, and I just want to share that with you directly so you're aware that we were given that opportunity to do so. But please ask the other questions so we can document that and, and don't, don't not, like, keep coming. Yeah, so that we can keep that conversation fresh.
There's also a, a kind of a a spur up is also is the, um, radiation facility. So you're aware that Waimeanalo has a radiation facility and it's, I think solely dedicated to those fruit flies.
Yeah, this, this conversation opened up a lot of channels to our conversations about how California has the opportunity to do business on Waimeanalo Ag Lots, for example. And, you know, I think there might be an opportunity in the near future for us to have a more condensed conversation specific to it. It might be a committee discussion perhaps, or it might be just a town hall on the conversations. But I'm gonna be very honest with you, the concerns that you raised were not present in my walkthrough of that place. For whatever reason, I didn't see the same concerns that you brought up to us. That doesn't discount them or disqualify your position on it. It just says that what we saw was not what you have shared. So we want to do more investigation into the reporting that they've provided to the public and figure out if there's gaps that we need to dig a little deeper to. We welcome you to join us in that. If you have access and time and resource to go through some of the public-facing reports, if you find things that are like questionable to the point of this Guatemala water, let us take a look at it, review it so that we can question it for sure.
Okay, um, most of the stuff that I brought to you is documented from them. Like, they have published this stuff. I see it, I bring it to you.
Yep, perfect.
And so, um, in addition to the 2.2 million gallons annually of sewage that they're dumping on the ground up there, there's the six cubic yards of solid waste and they are presenting that as compost. I've got a document here that, signed by the manager, that facility that says essentially if, uh, they don't have a contractor haul it away, the smell from that waste is so strong that complaints from the neighbors would shut the facility down. I wish.
We questioned that as well. We, we walked with, without any facial masks to make sure we could get a brief whiff of it for sure. We did see the, the facility and the equipment used to transition some of that to what they're calling compost. Again, if there's a way for us to have the definitions re-explained perhaps from the Department of Health, which is who we're connected to, there is absolutely ways for us to figure out if there are gaps that need to be filled for sure.
And if that actually is compost.
Correct.
They, they have, uh, one of the requirements of the process is that they heat their waste.
Correct.
To kill bugs that are in it.
Correct.
And that is what they're calling compost.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not the one that creates the definition of it. So if an entity creates a definition and they're within the right of that work, I don't know what to tell you beyond let's challenge it. But we have to have a good case in order to do it. So I think let's keep the notes that you've provided, which is absolutely relevant to the conversation. Couple that with what we experienced firsthand. And again, the invitation for us is open, so I know that there's a little bit of a challenge with you and that space unfortunately. But give us the opportunity to do some of the research work with your, you know, with your patients. Keep us abreast of things that you find out and, and we will question it to, to the intent. You know, we want to figure out what's going on to, to help. And, and there might be bigger conversations we need to have that we're not able to facilitate directly, but we're welcome to utilize the, the efforts of our, um, elected officials and our OHA and everything else at our disposal to help figure out what and who is benefiting from the work being done there.
And the second questions have to do with the solid waste. They're right around the corner, Hawaiian Earth Products sells compost.
Yes.
Eighty bucks a yard.
CRBNL.
CDF, yeah, CDFA is hiring a contractor to haul what they're calling compost away. So it, it, that doesn't add up. You know, that, uh, why would they pay someone to haul their compost away?
Sure.
When compost is a salable, you know, merchandise.
Sure.
So I think it would be, uh, important to get a lab assay of what that waste consists of. So that'd be my second question. Do you agree that we should, you know, see a lab assay result of their waste to see what's in it?
Yeah, again, we, we can't make an opinion based on having no discussion.
Yeah, I'm posing the question.
Okay, great, sorry.
And the third question is, I think we should know how and where they're disposing of their waste. And that's enough.
Awesome. Now, we really appreciate your work in the years of paying attention to the issue. It's not something new to the community, so your documentation has really elevated our ability to have the conversations in harder places and with people that are paying attention to it now. So definitely keep your voice present and we'll make sure we keep you abreast of whatever we find as well.
Okay, I'll email this document that I have to you and, um, look forward to hearing back.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mahalo for coming tonight. Thank you, David. Mahalo. Okay, members, anyone else in the public here tonight? Resident concerns? Seeing none. We're gonna move on. Thank you, gang. We're gonna go to our elected officials. We're gonna start off with Councilmember Kia Aina, who I understand is on travel. So Irene, the time is yours. Thank you for your patience.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Aloha, everyone. I'm Irene and I'm the Constituent Services Coordinator to Councilmember Esther Kia Aina. I'll be giving the report today. So to begin, for fiscal year 2026, Waimeanalo budget items. As you know, the city continues to work on park improvements, so it includes $1.1 million for Waimeanalo Beach Park for Comfort Stations and the Arts and Crafts Building. In the proposed CD2, Councilmember Esther Kia Aina included an additional $500,000 for park improvements, which was accepted. And then speed humps on Hii Manu. In the CD1, Councilmember proposed $150,000 dollars for speed humps along Hii Manu Street, which was also accepted. And the development of a pump track park in Waimeanalo District Park. So in the CD1, Councilmember proposed that at least $100,000 out of current expenses shall be appropriated for the development of a pump track park and in Waimeanalo District Park, which was accepted in the CD1. While she knows that overall cost will be higher than that, she encourages advocates to work with the private sector to raise the remaining funds. The council member is in discussion with both the Department of Parks and the Department of Design and Construction on how to kickstart the planning and design for the pump track. Regarding invasive species management, Councilmember Kia Aina wants to mahalo the community for their weekly efforts relating to the koki frogs. She is working with the DOT's reprie program on a cooperative agreement with the city to address invasive species issues, including tree replanting due to the coconut rhinoceros beetle. She is also working to make sure that the base yard for the Oahu Invasive Species Council is moving forward. She has contacted the UH Pacific Cooperative, uh, Studies Unit to make sure there is no problem with the agreement between UH and the city. So in the chat box, please find the city's press release regarding the city's proactive approach to address the coconut rhinoceros beetle threat. And then lastly, the landfill update. Councilmember Kia Aina wants to thank the Waimeanalo Board members who joined her on February 22nd on a tour of the five potential sites on the Windward Side. She also went with Chair Tommy Waters in March to view the North and South Kapaa Quarry sites. Um, the quarry is a major cement supplier for Oahu. Um, in the chat box, please find the completed report and appendix of the Kailua Neighborhood Board on potential landfill sites. Uh, Councilmember Kia Aina is completing her own report, which will be completed soon. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Irene, thank you so much. Members online, questions for Councilmember Kia Aina? Seeing none. Any public members online? Seeing none. Members present? Kuikie?
Mahalo, Chair. Irene, this is Kuikie. Um, I have a few questions. You know, the proposed 150K for, what was it, Hii Manu Street? Speed humps? Do we know how much speed humps were or speed tables were proposed?
Uh, it was, uh, let me see. I believe it was five, but I could double check. Yeah.
Yeah.
Five speed humps.
Okay, yeah. Can you please follow up on that? Because I want to make sure that it's what the community has requested. Because prior experience, you know, when we got 175K allocated for speed humps, yeah, they built us two and then they painted the road to look like they did before.
We had striping though.
Yeah, we had striping though. Yeah, and it wasn't until, uh, Community Town Hall, when I brought it to the attention of our leadership, you know, that they were like, huh? I said, no, you drove over the speed humps. And they were like, I didn't feel it. Case in point. So I just want to make sure that if it's in fact five, that we hold to that number because that's what the community has requested. And then if you were online earlier when Auntie Barb, um, testified, you know, we may have some additional requests coming for the next fiscal year down the line. So it'd be great if, um, Councilwoman can, um, explain what that process is, you know, at a future date. And then the last question follow-up I had, it's May now. So I was on that, that tour with, um, that, uh, Councilwoman organized for the landfills. And she mentioned that sometime in May, she would get you folks to organize a tour de trash for, um, our respective communities, Kailua and Waimeanalo. So we could understand what the county's waste process is in the current landfill at Waimeanalo. I want to know how far away are we from that tour? So if you could have an update on that from Councilmember.
That? Oh yeah, I could check in with her. Yeah. Yes. Sorry, I don't have the answer for that, but I will check in with Councilmember.
Yeah, she requested that we give her some grace, um, through budget season. And now that I know that you've guys been solidifying some of the line items that we've been requesting, yeah, we need to follow up on that before it's lost to us. And then the last thing is, when will Councilmember be back on island? Do you know? Do you have a date?
Tomorrow.
And so she'll be back in office by Wednesday?
Tomorrow, May 15th. I, she's, oh, she's in, uh, tomorrow. I'm not too sure she's coming in physically, but she will be, I'm sure she'll be physically in on Wednesday, uh, May 14th. Yes.
Awesome. Mahalo, Irene. Chair, are you at that?
Thank you. Canelo, you had questions for Councilmember? No? Okay. Members of the community? Hearing none. Irene, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that it's on Councilmembers', um, you know, attention. I just wanted to make sure that it's on Councilmembers', you know, attention list. That same stretch of Hii Manu, we also submitted a proposal to figure out if we could create some type of pedestrian walkway on either side of Hii Manu. If she has any update on where that request might also be. I know we provided some mapping of that space and I know things don't happen quickly, but definitely just to make sure that it's still present in mind, if you can just follow up on that as well. Perfect.
Will do. Thanks, Chair.
Hearing no other comments or questions. Irene, thank you so much for being present this evening and please mahalo your team and Councilmember for your advocacy. Thank you for your service. Members, we're gonna move on to Senator Chris. Hearing none. State Representative Lisa Martin? Aloha, Rep. Martin. Thank you so much for being here. Time is yours.
Yeah, excuse me, I have a cold, so I sound a little odd. But it happens at the end of session often. I just get worn down and I get sick. But I did want to report out a little bit. There's too much to tell, so if you have interest in certain things, please ask. But some of the CIP projects that are important to Waimea Nalo, one is half a million dollars to remove the old hurl building on Mackay Pier. And this is a community request to restore fishing. They couldn't have access while the building was actively falling apart. And so that won't happen immediately. But the good news is I think they should be able to wrap it in to the existing contract to repair the pier, which means that it is actually, it will happen much sooner than if it was an independent project because the permitting is already being processed for that. So hopefully they can slip it in there. Another thing that was funded is 9.5 million for the Kailua High School Girls Locker Room, which I had toured and it was what you would imagine a third world prison would look like. It was really just broken, broken down. A lot of the toilets called, sort of closed, sinks not working, terrible condition. So there are other facilities at the high school that are also in terrible condition, but one project at a time. So the Girls Locker Room is being done. This is for this year's funding. We're still working on previous funding to do the baseball field and the softball field and to do the investigation and design work for the football and track field, which will need future funding to actually do the projects. We also put 350,000 into the Waimea Nalo Health Center for their IT infrastructure so that they can more easily help patients that don't, you know, that have trouble coming in physically to the facility. Some other, some GIA's, state grant to these nonprofits that really benefit Waimea Nalo are 225,000 to 808 Cleanups, which does so much work in the community and our chair leads that work, as well as 170,000 to Sustainable Coastlines Hawaii, which is also very active in Waimea Nalo. And a variety of other, so many different grants and aid. I will mention one, which I got funded. Something that's been a subject of debate for this particular board, even though it doesn't necessarily focus on the Waimea Nalo community. And that is 150,000 for the Pacific Birth Collective to provide scholarships to people who want to become a licensed midwife, to help them with any sort of financial barriers that they might have. Some other, as you folks may know, my primary job at the legislature is a Chair of Human Services. And then this year in January, excuse me, homelessness was added to that kuliana. So in that area, I could talk for hours. But just suffice it to say that we are investing in expansion of different types of housing with supportive services that go with them, including an expansion of the Waimea Nalo Emergency Shelter and also an investment in the new site for the Hui Mahi Aina. Some of the other bills that I personally really worked on that were outside of my committee were the UH Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response, which was funded through our major biosecurity bill, which would, among other things, keep research moving forward for a biocontrol, which is a virus that infects beetles, but also provide training to landscapers on Oahu to help treat and save palm trees until such a time as we have a biocontrol and also to provide homeowners, residents with palm trees with instruction and supplies so that they can try to save their palms. This, literally last week, we discovered we have CRB at my project site in Kailua, where we have planted several hundred lolu. And we had netted, but we weren't keeping up with moving the nets as the palm trees grew. And so now we are, we are back at, with that focus. CRB is definitely a very current problem. Another bill I'll mention that I was very pleased with was a bill around prior authorization for insurance, trying to come up with a better system right now. Insurance companies farm out that process to for-profit third-party companies whose motivation is financial to deny prior authorizations. And our doctors waste a lot of time and staff administration not taking care of their patients, but instead dealing with prior authorizations, appealing them. Almost all of the ones that are denied do get overturned. So in the end, the patients do get the care if they're still alive to receive it. But sometimes their condition does get worse during that time. So this is a bill to start towards a path of automating that process so that we don't have those delays anymore. Another thing I'll mention is we did fund and make permanent the Community Outreach Court, which helps the homeless and they do have a monthly service in Waimea Nalo. I'd met them for the first time and, or learned about the Waimea Nalo efforts for the first time in the expungement event that I helped organize in January here in Waimea Nalo. And so I was very pleased to keep that program going. And with that, I will stop and leave it for any questions. We passed over 325 bills. So anything you are interested in, we probably pass something on it or kill something on it.
Mahalo for the clarification on the passing and killing, Representative. Thank you so much for your services and your hard work. We really appreciate your advocacy. Thank you. Members online, questions for Representative Martin? Seeing none. Anyone from the public online? Members present? Canelo?
Hi, good evening. Representative Lisa Martin, this is Canelo. Congratulations on your new title to help and service the houseless communities. I know you do a great job. My question, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but being in social services and helping in the houseless with transitioning young adults, adults into housing, has the state, city and county found a way to help those that have like felony charges to get housing? Because some of them come with a voucher, but there's the barrier of having that background criminal check that stops landlords, property managers from renting out to a lot of the individuals that receives these vouchers. So I was just seeing if maybe that's a part of your guys' conversations to help get over that barrier.
That is, excuse me, excuse me, that is Section 8 voucher, which is a federal program. The state does, we have to pay for half of the administrative cost for that. And I'm going to be honest, that is not something that I worked on in my committee this session. So I, if you'll give me the grace to come back with a better answer for you next month. But I do know, I have heard of conversations around that, but I don't know what the current status is. So I'll look it up and try to get a good answer for you next month on what, what the efforts have been and what has happened and what has not happened.
Thank you, Representative. One more question, Chair?
Please, go ahead.
I heard such great feedback from your expungement, um, community outreach. We were trying to figure out when would be the next one? So we could probably bring more individuals to do this event. So not really the community court one, the other one, the one you did in January.
It's, yeah, I understand. They were just there. A lot of different groups were there. And so that's the first time I came to understand that, you know, they work, they work directly in Waimea Nalo. But it was a great event. It was a huge investment of resources by a lot of organizations, not myself, right? I just had to show up for the morning. But in terms of the, you know, different judiciary, et cetera. So they probably will not do it again very soon in Waimea Nalo. I would say, you know, maybe we could try to get them to come every other year. And I did try to advertise it as much as I could. I sent mailers out to all the homes in Waimea Nalo before it. And maybe I can do a better job at getting the word out. But I was, I was gratified that we did have a lot of people show up and get help that day. But yeah, it is such an incredible investment on the part of the participants providing the services that it's not something we can do often.
Please.
So a follow-up question, Rep. Martin. Is there a satellite clinic on the west side that is more open than the event that happened in Waimea Nalo? For this expungement event?
And they had an expungement event before us and I read about it in the paper. And that's when I reached out to the judiciary and I said, I want one of those too. But I think they just had the one on the west side as well. And it was also very well-attended and very productive. So I think it's something they'll continue to do. But we had five judges there, right? They're volunteering their time. And so it's not something that we can do very frequently. But I hope that when we do it, you know, word will get out so that they can be as busy as possible.
Thank you. I pass it back to the Chair.
Mahalo, Canelo. Thank you so much. Anyone from the public? Hearing none. But Martin, I just have one thing that I want to follow up on and it's regarding some of the learning that we're experiencing through the koki frog work. And it, maybe it'll fit best in your role on the HISK, but it sits with the challenge we're having with OISK and RCUH, which is kind of like their management. But there's not a lot of data sharing that's available through OISK to the agency partners and to the community right now. And they're citing some of the challenges to be RCUH. And I'm just wondering how we might be able to start some conversations around opening up some of the learnings together. And part of the reason is, OISK is doing certain types of work that may be supportive, but we cannot fully validate, right? And then we're doing work separately with the State Department of Forestry. And unfortunately, the two agencies are not in conversation and neither are the Department of Ag. And so I'm just trying to bring us back together and figure out if we're, we know we're all walking on the same team, but why, why there might be a challenge there?
I can't tell you how many meetings I have had with all of those groups, informal meetings that we have convened at the Capitol to try to get them all talking, all sharing data, all coordinating so that they don't have overlapping tasks, but instead complement each other. You may be aware, just given your interest, that we passed a bill to rename the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Agriculture and Biosecurity. And they will have much broader kuliana. HISK will be moved over in five years. Right now it's under GLNR. It will be moved to, to this new department. It concerned me a lot. I fought that very hard because I have not had the greatest experience with the Department of Agriculture when it comes to invasive species. Well, they may be very good in some areas, other areas. But five years is a long time. And in 2027, they will hire a newly, you know, a new position for a deputy director for, specifically for biosecurity. So if that person is a dynamic leader, you know, it may be a good thing for HISK to move. So we'll see. But I do hope that having a more centralized hub, if that hub is of good intent and goodwill, will help with a lot of these problems in the long run. In the short run, yes, we'll continue trying to get everybody to share data with each other. There are sometimes some legal issues, but I don't think it's impossible to overcome those.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It seems pretty simple to share a map about where they're doing work. So I may be oversimplifying it, but I definitely don't want RCUH to be a barrier to the work necessary in the community. And I look forward to working with you on trying to clean that up. Thank you for your advocacy there.
I hear you. Thank you.
Mahalo. Feel better. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Members, we're gonna move on to Congresswoman Jo Tukuda's office. Oh, excuse me, Governor Josh Green's office. Mahalo for being here, Randy. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, everybody who's gone before me and spoken and given updates, OHA, trustee, Akaka, your staff, meeting members, thank you for being here. So I have a few updates from Governor Green. The first thing is, as Rep. Martin kind of touched on, there were hundreds of bills that were passed. And now it is the governor's kuliana to review everything. Veto list is due June 24th, so he is working on that. Actual veto deadline is July 9th, but that is what he's working on right now to make sure everything that our legislators worked so hard on this session gets resolved. Okay, number two. Our Department of Education wanted me to remind everybody that graduation season starts this weekend. The first one is this Friday. Radford High School starts. And then it goes all the way until the end of this month, literally, May 31st is the last graduation. So, yeah, these next few weekends, it's gonna be busy. Plan your commutes accordingly because you know how it gets when graduation season is going with traffic, et cetera. Number three, Executive Office on Early Learning is taking applications for free public pre-K for the upcoming school year. So current applications are priority for families based on eligibility and home-school region. Starting July 1st, so this is in about a month and a half, applications are gonna open to everybody on a first-come, first-served basis for all keke, which include children that are three or four before July 31st. So this is free preschool, pre-K. You can get more information at earlylearning.hawai.gov for that. So if you qualify, apply before July 1st. Number four, Department of Transportation wanted me to update everybody saying that the real ID deadline on your driver's license was May 7th. It was May 7th. Hawaii was 98%, 96% compliant, which is great. But if you did not get a chance to get that and you know, with summer breaks coming up, more people might be traveling, it just might require additional screening if you don't have that real ID on your ID, on your driver's license. Okay, next thing, number five. Oh, I think the Marine Corps, they're, they're working on something with us. This Saturday is a 10th anniversary commemoration of the Osprey crash, the helicopter crash that happened. So that's gonna be happening and on the same day as the Waimea Nalo Elementary and Middle Schools, what was it, 100 and 100-year anniversary? So just across the way, Bello's Area, only in the morning time, we're gonna be doing a commemoration there. And then last thing on my list is LFAs. The Hawaii Department of Agriculture is offering free treatment for a little- The Hawaii Department of Agriculture is offering free treatment for a little LFA. The program allows for about 580 residential properties to receive free treatment. So this is something that went into effect in March. And I'm not sure they're going to accept applications until, you know, they can. And I'm not sure if that they have reached that point yet, but you can look for that information on the Department of Agriculture's website. The URL is really long. You can call 808-832-0566. That's the Plant Quarantine Branch's phone number for more information on how to apply and et cetera, et cetera. That is all. Thank you very much.
Mahalo, Nui. Thank you so much for being here, Randy, and your patience in in presenting this evening after everybody. Members online, questions for the governor's office? And then I just want to recognize that our time is at 9:30, so we'll be very quick and brief. Anyone in public online? Hearing none. Members present? Please, Canela?
Good evening, Canela. Thank you. I guess my question is, does Governor Josh Green, I don't know if it falls under you folks, but if you guys have the update on the small school closure, there's like a media that came out with Kiolu Elementary, Unlatch Shore Elementary School, that was going to be like a part of a school closure. It did come up on social media. It did come up on media. My biggest concern is, one, do you guys have an update? And then, two, Waimea Nalo Elementary School was not listed as a school to be closed, but it was featured on that media, like they just showed Waimea Nalo Elementary as the school. So that's a come. I did bring that concern. If you could try and get us an update to see what's happening with the state, city and county and DOE on what schools are planning on closing. It may be also proposed that these kitchens are like licensed kitchens. So if they can't utilize as a school, it can be utilized as cafeterias to cook better nutritious foods for the schools. Yeah.
Mahalo, Canela. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I personally don't have an answer for that, but I would definitely talk to the folks that I know at DOE and get an answer for you and let y'all know. Awesome. Thank you.
Mahalo. Members from the public? Don't go anywhere. I'm not done with you. Go back over there. Nah.
My first one.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just send it.
You're fine. You're fine. Randy, just two follow-ups if we might. Mahalo to to the Board of Education and the Department for speaking through to just some of the ideas. We would love to get the Department of Education here. We would love to talk to leadership at the Department of Education. We have a beautiful interest in our keke and our kupuna. And we want to build a relationship there that might be productive perhaps for us to think through. So if there's a way to invite the leadership from the Department of Education to come and just be with the community, that would be a great opportunity, I think we want to look at. And then I have a question for the Department of Ag. I know you mentioned that their program right now has 5,000 residential homes. When are they planning to, or residential, is it 5,000?
It is for, it's not 5,000.
500.
It's 580 residential, yes.
When, when are they going to help our farmers? If you can just ask them that as bluntly as I just said it, that would be great.
Roger that. I do.
Mahalo. And that's all I have for you, but we, I lied. Waimea Nalo Elementary is celebrating 100 years. What is the state doing to celebrate that? Ask them that too. Ask the governor. Yeah. But just, it would be beautiful to see, you know, what, what do we do for education in that way? And has the state stepped up to do so? I'm not aware of anything, whether it's at the state level, the Department of Board of Education level, or even just down here. But 100 years is a big deal.
That's a big deal.
And, you know, if we're celebrating 10 years of an Osprey crash, 100 years is important.
Absolutely.
You know. And I don't want to take away from the emotion of the Osprey crash, you know. But it seems like the priorities can can develop a little bit further. Yeah. Yeah, and the work over here is 1 o'clock. So if governor is over there in the morning, just stop over here. Yeah.
I know he's not going to be there.
Okay.
Yes, but.
Scratch that. Nah.
I understand, and I hear you. It is important. 100 years is a big deal. So although I cannot say who is going to be there, I wish you the best, most amazing celebration and congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for making time and congratulations on being a part of Waimea Nalo's Neighborhood Board. Sure, very quickly.
Sorry. For the 580 residential property, is that only on Oahu or across the state?
I believe it's across the state.
Okay.
Yes, and the program started, they announced it in March. So it's just on a first-come-first-served basis. But yes, if you go on the Department of Ag's website or that phone number, yeah, they can answer the more detailed questions.
Awesome. And I think we have your contact information, so we're good to go.
Okay.
Randy, thanks for making the drive out here. We appreciate your service.
It's my pleasure. Mahalo. I'll see you again next month.
We'll be here. Mahalo, gang. We're going to go Congresswoman Jo Tukuda's office. Hearing none. Members, we've got two items on the board business. Approval of regular meeting minutes. This is for Monday, March 24th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mahalo, moved by Kuikie. Is there a second? Seconded by Canela. Members, we're in discussion. If I might, I'm going to pass the mic to Kuikie just to offer an amendment, so. Chair, can I be recognized for offering an amendment?
Yes.
Mahalo. I just want to make an amendment on the recommendation on the Mediterranean Fruitfly Center visit reports piece. We mentioned Member Granberg, Member Milan, and Member McKeeg. I just want to insert that I also was present for that, so if we can just add Member Kani to that particular section of the report.
Sure. Mahalo for the amendment. I will, no, well, I accept it and I will pass the floor back over to you.
Mahalo. So there's an amendment on the floor, members. Is there a second to the amendment? Mahalo. Are there any questions or discussion on the amendment? Okay, no discussion. We're going to take a vote on the amendment first, and then we'll take a vote with, or is it okay to just make the motion to include the amendment? Rachel, what you guys want to do? Kuikie, maybe you want to restate the motion to include the amendment?
Sure. I move that we accept the meeting minutes from last month, March.
March 24th.
Yeah, I was, let the record show that I was in labor.
It's bringing life to the world.
Making the meeting from the birth room. Yeah. And I move, well, and this motion to accept the meeting minutes to amend it as well to reflect that the portion of the Fruitfly facility to also include Chair Kani, that he was present.
Perfect. Mahalo. Is there a second? Mahalo. Members, recognizing eight members total this evening, we're going to take a row, sorry, you want to do a row couple? Yeah, we're going to give Brandon some practice. He's our new NCO agent, one year, one month, one week on the on the job. So members, when your name is called, you're stating aye, you support the motion with amendment for the meeting minutes. Nay if you do not abstain if you never make up your mind yet. Brandon?
Okay, yes. Board members, if you could please be on camera for the voting process. We're about to begin. Okay. Board member, Katie Nani Granberg? Oh, can you, or, yeah. How do you vote? Aye. Okay. Board member Jenna McKeeg, still absent? Yeah, okay. Board member Lourdes Milan, still absent? Yes. Board member Moyata Moku Lehua?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Capiolani Ni?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Ted Ralston?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Canela Kamahalo Ha Nui La?
Aye.
Aye. Board member Brenda Wong?
Aye.
Aye. Chair Kimiona Kani? Aye. Board member Kuikie Kamakia O'Hello?
It's Kamakia O'Hello, but yes, mahalo. I vote aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hey, good job.
Yeah. Okay, yes. So the the motion passes with eight ayes, zero nays, and zero abstain.
Congratulations. Okay, Kako, so that passes. Mahalo for your attention to it. Board Business 9B Landfill Site Visit Report, this is to take a position on the determination of the next landfill site or to propose a position. Are we, any of our members ready to do so at this time? If not, I'm going to defer it to next meeting? Moyata?
I would say let's defer until we are able to do that meeting with Councilwoman.
It's okay. You had a long, long week. Mahalo for for being here tonight and congratulations on your wedding. Yes. Okay, so members, we're looking to defer this topic until the next meeting. Anyone object? Hearing none. Mahalo again to you folks for attending that. Thank you very much. Members, this brings us to the end of our meeting. Meeting announcements, next Neighborhood Commission Office announcements. Anything from you folks that need to be shared?
I'm not sure if we announced it earlier, but this will be my last board meeting. So Brandon Sark will be the new NA starting next month.
Congratulations. Rachel, mahalo for your service to our community on this board. We really appreciate you stepping in. Yeah, and welcome to you. You want to introduce yourself a little bit?
Yes. Yeah, my name is Brandon Sark. I just finished my first week with the NCO. My my staff files up on our Honolulu NCO website if you just want to, you know, read a little bit more about me. But more than that, I just want to say I'm very enamored and impressed by the way this board runs this meeting. Just this whole evening about kind of just celebrating community achievements and raising the community's concerns to the city and the state and promoting local organizations and small businesses. It's just very exciting. And I look forward to doing some good work with you guys.
Awesome. Mahalo, Brandon. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, gang. Next Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 9th. That'll be 2025 at 7:00 PM here at the Waimea Nalo Library. And it would be a hybrid option. There will be a 2025, excuse me, there is a Ololo broadcast schedule. Waimea Nalo Neighborhood Board number 32 meetings are broadcast on Ololo Channel 49 on the fourth Monday of the month and at 9:00 PM. And on the first and third Saturdays of the month at 3:00 PM. As always, the video replays can be also found online if you are interested in that. Seeing no other items before the board, I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair to close this off. Mahalo. Somebody had something? No, okay.
What happened?
You're closing our meeting. Mahalo.
Hulikako. Ahoia oikea konaui na na noi ho'ohulikalani me kohonua na ono kamaana. Na kini a ko na'au mako mena'aku puna'akupoma ke'a. Ke'alo hoonui a'ukopaka he'a pau. Eno mako ka'okeiki mopuna kekahi. Me ke'aleo mahalo ya oikea konaui. Na'akano'ho'ana me mako i ke'amea kalai, ke'halavai kukaku ka. Ah, pili ana namea pono no'ke'a kaya ulu no'ke'ia. Ah, upoa no'ke'ia vahipo'e no'ke'ia vahiohana o Waimea Nalo nee. Ah, he'aleo mihi ke'ia no'namea hapao a mako i ana pono oleai. Ah, me ke'la, you know, ho'una hoo'i e ke'aleo mahalo me ke'aloha. Ah, e'olo'olo ke'aku'a e ho'ia ku'ia mako i kokako vahipono mahopea okapava nee ke'halavai. Ah, no'oi ke'ama me'a amekau alakai ma'kinoka'okeiki ameko kako kama. O'yasu no'ameni mahalo.
Mahalo, Kako. That brings us to the end of our meeting. This meeting is adjourned at 9:44 PM. Drive safe, be well. Ahoiho, Kako.
Ahoiho.